On the meeting of November fourteenth to order, can someone close the door in the back? So the acoustics are only awful instead of dismal. Close the door, please. Okay, good morning, everybody. This is the meeting of November fourteenth and we'll start with the consideration of the hearing minutes from October twenty-sixth and October thirty-first.
Good morning. We're going to pass on the hearing minutes and we're going to go right to the extensions. Extensions for nine thirty. I'm going to call BZC three zero six four two, three forty, three sixty, Boyleston Street. Is Boyleston Street here?
Yeah.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you doing?
Good. Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin Rena from Coulson and Stores, four hundred Atlantic Avenue. I'm here with Harold Dennis from Drewker Company requesting one-year extension of zoning relief for the building on three forty, three sixty Boyleston Street.
All right, can you explain what the need for the extension is?
Yes, it's an approved office building in Back Bay at the corner of Arlington and Boyleston. And long story short, we're still looking for, the client's still looking for a tenant, you know, pounding the pavement every day, but don't have anyone lined up right now. And a spec office building in Back Bay just isn't viable at this point.
When is the expiration date?
It's December second.
Okay.
Motion for extension.
Second.
Could I make a statement? I mean, generally, we're allowing extensions, but one extension. In this economic climate, you know, things have to be ready to go.
So what we're looking for, is there a term on the proposed extension?
We've requested a year, we think, Craig, the motion?
A motion for one-year extension.
Okay, but we would ask that you take Mr. Fazani's comments seriously and get it sorted out within the next year. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you. Second case, BOA four seven five zero three three, one zero eight Greenfield Street. Is one zero eight Greenfield Street here? We'll hold that. We'll hold that aside. Case BOA nine seven two two one, eight fifteen East Fifth Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maransy with a business address of three fifty West Broadway, requesting a one-year extension.
Could you explain the reason for the request?
It's for financing, Mr. Earl.
Motion to accept.
Hang on, could you say a little more than that? That's a little vague.
Oh, certainly. It's a fifteen-unit project, or excuse me, it's a nineteen-unit project, and they had to go through extensive design review. And the initial bank that they were using is not being used to fund the project, and now they have to go back out. Without the extension today, it would expire.
When would the expiration date be?
It would expire today.
Today, okay. And are you confident that with your extension, you could get the financing arranged and move forward?
My client tells me that that's possible. That's why we're requesting a one-year extension.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion for a one-year extension.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're all set.
BOA four eight nine eight seven five two thirty-nine Boston Street. Is, oh.
Patrick.
Hi, Patrick.
Go ahead.
Patrick Mahoney, three fifteen West Broadway of Adams &amp; Maransy, requesting a one-year extension.
And again, can you give the reason?
Financing would be the reason.
I thought money was flowing in the streets of Boston.
To some extent.
Okay, when would that expire?
That would expire on December nineteenth.
Make a motion for an extension.
One year?
One year.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Calling for all nine thirty hearings, looking for deferrals or withdrawals.
Craig, is the, you want to call again the extension that wasn't here? Are they?
I'll go back to BOA four seven five zero three three, one zero eight Greenfield Street. Is Greenfield Street here? I'm going to still table that, Mark. All right. Hearings for nine thirty, do I have any withdrawals or deferrals for nine thirty? Hearing none, I'll move forward. BOA seven six four one nine nine, one three five dash one three nine Border Street. To change occupancy from offices to apartment and accessory storage to office and seven apartment complete renovation with new sprinkler system as per plans. Article twenty-five, section five flood hazard district. Article fifty-three, section fifty-six off-street parking insufficient. Article fifty-three, section twelve dimensional regulation. Usable open space insufficient. Name and address, please, for the record. I'm sorry, there's, I'm sorry, there's a companion case to this. I'm new to this today, so please have patience. Companion case, change occupancy from offices, one apartment and accessory storage to office and seven apartment complete renovation with new sprinkler systems per plan. Violation eighth of the building code, seven eight zero CMR seven oh five point eight. Opening exterior, opening of exterior wall. Openings are not allowed in exterior wall where the fire separation distance is less than three feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark LaCasse. I represent the owner of the property, Boston Realty Industrial Trust Group. With me is David Schulman, who's the trustee and owner of the building, and Lyle Bradley, the architect, the record for the project. Shall we start with the building code issue?
As per usual.
So the existing structure has windows on a side wall of the building, which have been in existence since at least nineteen seventy-seven, when my client's family first acquired this building and have continuously owned the building since then. I've submitted a report from our code consultant, Building Fire and Access Incorporated, outlining that under the International Existing Building Code, openings in existing walls are permitted and shall be accepted, provided that the degree of hazard is not increased. And for this particular property, the change of use on the first floor is not increasing the hazard, and then on the upper two floors, we residential, and again, the code consultants' report indicates that the relative hazard index is not changing, and therefore, section nine twelve point six point two of the International Existing Building Code is applicable, which simply provides, "When a change in occupancy classification is made to an equal or lesser hazard category, as shown in table nine twelve point six, existing exterior walls, including openings, shall be accepted." And I've submitted the report of Robert Carr Steady, our fire protection engineer.
Mr. Fazani?
I have a couple of questions. This is a complete gut renovation. So therefore, it falls under category three.
Right.
A level three renovation.
Yes.
Which means that everything has to be brought up to code. I'm going to make a motion to deny the building code relief. You have the option of going to the state.
The option, I'm sorry.
Going to the state.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that's the building code issue. You want to talk about the zoning issues?
Yes, so there are, there are three zoning issues before the board today for consideration. The first is, well, basically, the project is in a community commercial sub-district, and the proposed use, which is a mixed use, office space on the ground floor and residential units on the top two floors, the uses are allowed as a right. The zoning issues relate to dimensional and the flood hazard district. The simple dimensional issue is insufficient usable open space. The building is one hundred percent lot coverage, so by creating additional dwelling units on the second and third floor, we simply don't have any open space on the property to create fifty square foot per dwelling unit as required, so we seek a variance from the usable open space provision. There is a parking requirement, of course, for the creation of additional residential units. There currently is one residential unit, and we are increasing to seven residential units. But again, the lot coverage of the building is one hundred percent, so there's no possibility of creating parking spaces. The building, however, is located about a ten-minute walk from the Maverick Blue Line T Station, and there are five different bus lines that serve this part of East Boston.
So there are zero parking spaces?
Zero parking spaces existing, zero proposed, simply no place to put them. And then finally, the third issue is article twenty-five, the flood hazard district. Under article twenty-five, section five, subsection four, for pre-existing structures may be reconstructed or changed, provided that any non-conformity is not increased, and that this board may grant a conditional use permit for a pre-existing non-performing building. It's my understanding that what this board seeks with respect to existing buildings under article twenty-five is to indeed not increase any non-conformity, thereby, nothing in the basement, no occupied space will be in the basement, and more importantly, no mechanical systems are in the basement, and no electrical panels are in the basement, so that we're not increasing or we're jeopardizing any of the building's systems as it relates to the flood hazard. So we would see a conditional use permit under that particular provision of article twenty-five, since the non-conformity with respect to the flood hazard district is not being increased. And those are the, those are the three zoning issues.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Fazani?
Drawing track.
Okay, are there any questions to the board?
Also, Mr. Chairman, we have twenty letters of support from various members of the community. There was a butter meeting with a sponsor by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, at which nobody opposed the project, so I'd like to submit those for the record as well.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Jesus Garcia, we'd like to go on record in support. As the proponents stated, there has been community process on this, and they do have support from the community. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. We have a city councilor, Sal Martin, as our representative. Community's points of concern will just be on recording this portion as well.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? I have a motion, please.
Motion for approval with continued PPEA designer review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And then you'll have to deal with the building code issue separately.
With the state, yes, understood.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Calling BO, BOA? Okay, says BO. Okay, sorry. Calling BOA seven six four one nine eight, I'm sorry, I just called that. BOA seven five six eight two zero, forty-eight dash fifty-two Boyleston Street. So change of use from a recreational facility, office and retail, to forty-six temporary housing shelters, office and retail. The temporary residential unit will be located on floors two through five, selective interior demolition, demolition and demolition of two-story portion of the building. Exterior restorations include pointing and, pointing and window replacement, installation of new MEP, fire alarm and fire sprinkler systems, TWs, cubicles. Fees deferred until apartment ready issued. Violation, article twenty-three, section one, off-street parking, off-street parking insufficient. Article thirty-two, section six, Gcod conditional use, Gcod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ruth Silman with Nixon Peabody, on behalf of the applicant, which is a joint venture between St. Francis House and the Planning Office for Urban Affairs. With me is Bill Grogan from the Planning Office and Steve Garvin from Samiotis. A few things to clarify. The denial letter was actually incorrect in two ways. This is not temporary housing. This is permanent housing for formerly homeless people. Forty-six units, it doesn't matter with respect to the uses themselves, but the actual description is, we just want to be clear, this is permanent, permanent housing. It doesn't impact the zoning. There is an improper citation to the off-street parking, however, and in the appeal, we raised this, and we're working with ISD to try to correct this as well. Pursuant to section thirty-eight dash twenty-two, off-street parking is not required unless a property is in the PDA. This property is not in the PDA, so we believe that was improperly cited, and that no relief is required for off-street parking.
So ISD said that there is a requirement for how many spaces?
It depends on what you do within the PDA. The off-street parking would be controlled through the PDA.
What would it be? That's what I was asking.
There is no requirement. In the Midtown Cultural, there's no off-street parking requirement, so there's nothing to cite to in the code, and the letter from ISD didn't cite a certain number of spaces.
They did not?
No.
Okay.
In terms of your discussions with ISD, are they going to rewrite the letter withdrawing it? Because I'm uncomfortable with having stated violations.
That is what we-
And not having a letter of withdrawal from ISD.
We are, we are in the process of trying to obtain that from them.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest, in fact, the best course of action for this is a deferral.
I mean, otherwise, our only alternative would be to go through the process and then hold until you went through that, so we couldn't act finally today anyway.
Right, but one of the issues is that since we're already faced with a descriptive change.
Right.
What was originally put out there to everybody in the world as temporary is now permanent.
Okay.
And then issued on the property. I would make a motion for a deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Want a date? Hold on, folks. Do you want a date?
We would love a date.
How about the twenty, how about January twenty-third?
So is there, if it's possible, we think we could resolve this. We're trying very, very hard with city money to get to a closing by the end of this year. Could we be on for two weeks, please?
I think we have room on the twelfth of December, or, can we do this? We could do the twenty-eighth.
We would greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Twenty-eighth of November, sorry.
What time?
I think it's eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Again, I'm new to this, so I keep waiting for people to talk, and it's my job to talk. BOA seven five three six three three, five Acorn Street. Do you have the file? Complete renovation of all floors, including existing roof deck and roofing. Article thirteen, section thirteen one dimensional regulations. The new bay on the lower level triggers the rear yard setback. Article thirteen, section thirteen one dimensional regulations. The reconfiguration of space and additional floor area creates excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Julia Smith. I'm the architect for the project, and-
Can you speak up a little bit, please?
I'm Julia Smith. I'm the architect for the project, and I'm from twenty-seven Gurnee Street in Cambridge. I'm representing Karen Dunbar, the owner, who is resident at five Acorn Street.
Okay. Could you describe the project and what barriers do you see?
The project is basically an upgrading of the five-story residence. It's a five-story brick townhouse, single-family, on Beacon Hill. And it hasn't been renovated for some time, so the owner thought that it was time to do this. And during the course of the renovation, several issues came up, which the building department flagged as needing a zoning variance.
Okay, and could you walk through those?
The first of those was the extension of the existing bay, which I can actually show you a little better. Can you see this all right? So this is the existing situation in the rear. This bay window, which faces onto their garden, has become quite deteriorated over time due to roof leakage. So it has to be essentially restructured, resupported, and reclad.
This is the rear elevation we're looking at?
Well, it's a side elevation. If you want, I can show you this. It doesn't face directly out anywhere, it faces into their garden. It's an L on the original building. So this is the original situation.
How many floors is the bay window?
Right now, it's three floors. The owner would like to extend the two floors down to grade, partly because it gives it a better foundation to rest on, and partly because it supplies more light to those two floors and the living spaces. The square footage that the, well, I guess the first thing they cited was the overlap of the rear yard setback. The rear yard setback would come ten feet into this wing, and so about a third of this bay extension would be projecting into that required rear yard setback.
The newly proposed bay extends beyond the wall's same distance as the old one?
It's exactly the same profile, yeah.
And what else?
And the other issue was excessive FAR in general.
Okay.
Which was due, number one, to this extension of the bay, which is only thirty-two square feet, sixteen square feet per floor. A head house at the roof level, which is to provide access to the stair that goes down to the fourth floor and up to the roof deck. And the, the existing situation is a very ancient and somewhat unsafe hatch that just is physically lifted to gain access, and it's only one foot nine wide, so it clearly had to be replaced in any case. Because the head house projects above the line of the roof, I've had to assign forty square feet to that as additional FAR. The remainder of the FAR is due to reconfiguration of closet space within the existing outline of the building, which is a requirement that ISD pointed out to me.
How many units are there, can I know?
One. It's a civil family house, yeah.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Fazani?
Drawing track.
What are your thoughts on the issue of the head house?
It's absolutely the minimum that's required, slope, head house.
Okay. All right, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this project?
Members of the board, just a girl at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we would like to go on record in support of this case. We held a butter's meeting where residents did come out, and if I believe I'm correct that the direct abutters were actually in support of this, of this new wall, they said that they liked the new plans, and other concerns were just regarding late parking and other issues related to construction around the area. The Beacon Hill Civic Association is also in support. Thank you.
Is anyone here in opposition? I have a motion, please.
Motion for approval with continued Beacon Hill designer review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And all set?
BOA, calling the next case, BOA seven six zero three zero five six six seven dash six six nine Boyleston Street. Okay. Sixteen outdoor seating for restaurant filed under ALT seven five three two five zero. Article eight, section seven, use is conditional, outdoor seating is conditional. Companion case, BOA seven six zero three zero six, change of occupancy to a restaurant with takeout, interior renovation, and new tenant fit out. Fit out. Outdoor seating will be, will filed separately, which we have. Article eight, section eight, use is conditional, use item thirty-six A, takeout restaurant is conditional. You, article eight, section seven, use is conditional, use item thirty-seven, restaurant is conditional. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good morning, Dennis Coulter, Attorney General, representing the applicant, Kava Meza Grill, with his partner, Cardier, from Kava. This is a, the site of a candy's, present, a former candy store on Boyleston Streets, hoping to be occupied for Kava, which is a, presented the plans to you this morning. A healthy food alternative with a Mediterranean kind of style to it, if you will, very popular around the country. This is a site which has been, you know, a semi-food use in the past. We were in front of the Neighborhood Association at a meeting which they voted not to oppose, made outreach with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services with regard to a butter's meeting, which was deemed not necessary, this site of present use. And we are here with, we think, no opposition to the use at this time. And as you can see, the outdoor seating is filed on a separate application.
Okay. You want to just walk us through what the violations are?
It's conditional use of any restaurant in the Back Bay, exactly.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Fazani?
Drawing your adequate query. Kava, is it named after prosecco or?
Do you know? Kava just Mediterranean for, you know, appetizer, come in, Kava Meza.
Those things don't go lightly past our architect.
No. And there is no, there's no license to serve it, unfortunately.
Full-time architect, part-time restaurant critic, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Well aware.
One question, how do you, I see the restrooms, lavatories in the basement, how do you get access to that? How do you get access to that?
I honestly...
Handicap access.
I honestly, I do not know. Does the plan show? No, I don't know there's an elevator. And it may be just, you know, staff-related. Seats don't really fall for... Doesn't say, no access issue cited by ISD. I presume it's a staff use only, as many of these places are, limited seating.
There's a stair and there's an elevator.
Okay, there's an elevator. I was unaware.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Chairman, members of the board, just saw a girl at the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We would like to go on record in support. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is in support, and I have not received any opposition from any of the butters. Thank you.
My name is Martin Retta. I'm the Chair of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. We have reviewed this application, and we do not oppose it.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Motion, please.
Motion to approve. Jeff, did they need BPDA design review?
It'll be Back Bay, anyway.
Okay, so just motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I assume they're signing, there'll be sign...
As you can see, it's written on the plan, Architectural Commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next case is BOA 736317, 101 Jersey Street, Boston, Mass. Change occupancy to add wireless telecommunications facility. Install eight antennas inside a concealment element on the roof of the existing building and four antennas to the facade of the existing stairwell penthouse. Install 21 remote radiohead units and five surge arrestors on ballast frames of existing roof. Install condenser unit on existing roof. Construct equipment room in vacant space in building space. Install fiber and power cabling. Install vertical cable tray, as more specifically known, on the plan submitted with application. The violations are Article 86, Section 6, Use and Dimension Regulation. Any antenna is a conditional use in a residential district. Article 86, Section 6, again, Use and Dimensional Regulations. Insufficient setback from building and use for residential.
Good morning. Would you like to describe the project, please?
Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney, PA RE, Attorney at Brown Russell, here at AT&amp;T One Financial Center, Boston, Massachusetts. AT&amp;T is experiencing a significant gap in coverage in this area of Boston. We propose the design which meets with the, which meets with the screening and camouflage provisions. Two of these sectors will be in faux chimneys, so they blend in with the building. The third sector will be in an alleyway. They'll be attached to an existing penthouse and painted to match the background. In keeping with the B.R.A. directives, we have 10 feet off the roof edge and 9 feet in height. So it's in keeping with the designs that we've been using. It's similar to a competitors' installation across the street. I'd be happy to answer any questions in particular, but we're looking to install 12 antennas and provide cutting-edge service in that area of Boston.
What's the material use of the faux chimneys?
It's fiberglass, but it will be painted and formed so that it resembles a brick chimney. If you look at the photos, you'll see it blends in pretty well.
How are the drawings, Mr. Fazani?
The drawings are fine. The 3D representations look as if it blends in very well.
All right. Any questions, the board? Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Chairman, members of the board, just saw a girl at the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We would like to go on record in support. We did hold an butters meeting and no one came to it. I have received no opposition. And the Federal Civic Association has also been in support of this project.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Can I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve with our continued BPDA design review.
For a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're all set.
Calling next case, BOA 727-018, 77 Exeter Street. Change occupancy from a retail store to registered marijuana dispensary. Interior renovation for tenant fit out. Article 8, Section 7, use is conditional. Use item number 39B, Marijuana Medical Treatment Center, is conditional. The address is 77 Exeter Street. I'm sorry. I apologize. The rookie made a mistake. The address is 331A and 333 Newberry Street.
Just follow Jason Tatum.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. All right. So name and address.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Michael Ross, Prince Lobel Law Firm. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm here with my client, Compassion Organics, the CEO, Jeff Reilinger, who's also a lifelong resident of the Back Bay and a patient, suffering with multiple sclerosis and went through a life-changing event when he discovered the benefits of medical marijuana. He has not had a seizure since he began taking medical marijuana. We're also at the table with Dan Linsky. You may recognize him. He's the former superintendent-in-chief of the Boston Police Department, and he's our security advisor and has been with us every step of the way throughout this process. And we're applying, as you know, for a conditional use permit for medical marijuana at the end, the last block of Newberry Street. Sorry. We did supplement the record earlier with a memorandum on the, on the matter that goes into much greater detail, but I provided plans for the members of the board. We've had a thorough community process, beginning in July, with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay's Building Use Committee. We then met again with NAB August 9th. It was a follow-up meeting. And then we had an butters meeting on September 18th as well. We were, we know that NAB is formally opposed today, but we were pleased that we initially did receive a vote of support from their committee. I don't know what happened to change that. We have made several commitments through this community process. The most substantial is that this will be a medical-only facility. That's a pretty significant commitment for Jeff to make, this close to recreational, starting in Massachusetts. But he made it because he wanted to get there on Newberry Street. Wanted to get the support of the community. He also has agreed to put police details on Commonwealth Avenue Mall to chase after illegal consumption of marijuana, working with the Boston Police Department and with Dan Linsky, and other items like free parking for his patients at a nearby garage that would be validated to try to eliminate any types of use or nuisances of cars or those types of things. You know, we, we're happy to answer any, any questions.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Fazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Are there any questions on the board? Is there anyone to speak in favor of the project?
Chairman, members of the board, we'd like to start off with saying that, yes, there has been extensive process. We did meet with NAB at a community forum, and we also, I also hosted an butters meeting at the library on September 18th. I have received numerous emails and calls regarding this proposal. And at this time, the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to say that we are simply upholding the city council vote on this case. So we're not taking a position of support or opposition on the actual dispensary. We're just upholding...
And that vote was...
In support. So they are a vote of non-opposition to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Patrick Tiley. I'm a real estate agent in Back Bay. I'm reading this letter on behalf of Dr. Richard Atkinson, who's testified at numerous NAB-sponsored meetings, could not make it here this morning. I'm a medical doctor, practicing in Boston.
Can you summarize, I have a feeling it'd be a number of speakers. Can you summarize it?
Yep. So he effectively ties opioid abuse and addiction to medical marijuana as being a positive benefit. So in places where medical marijuana exists, opioid abuse falls. And he thinks it would be a welcome addition to our neighborhood, and the members are directly accountable to Back Bay as they are residents.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, chairman, members of the board. My name is Kenell Brumstein. I'm a business agent for IBW Local 103. I'm here in support, in strong support of the project. The proponent has committed to one of our, has promised to commit to one of our signature contractors, which means the project will create jobs and include good wages and benefits for the residents of our city. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is President of the Carpenter Association. On behalf of all our members that live and work for the city of Boston, we would like to go on record support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ann Hochberg. I'm the attorney for the owner of the building. And I just wanted to make a few points in support of change of use. Historically, the lower Newbury Street, lower part of Newbury Street has been a unique Boston business area, both industrial and retail. It's sort of been the funkier end of Newbury Street. The father, the current owner of the site, bought the building in 1962. Previously, it was a hardware store, and then an art supply store, and then a recording studio. There was an article, there was a Boston Magazine or Boston Globe Magazine featuring this location, 331 Newbury Street, that showed photographs of when it was synchro sound and used by local Boston artists such as Bonnie Raitt, Aerosmith, and The Cars, who record Shake It Up there. In any event, we, we support this use, obviously. And we think the neighborhood opposition to the use may have the effect of driving out a locally-owned, small business that has been there for decades. Retail down at that end of the street and in general has been down. You know, this use will, it's better than having an empty storefront because retail is down due to e-commerce and other factors. And instead of...
Please make any zoning issues. I like Bonnie Raitt, but I think we need to focus on zoning issues.
Well, generally, just that there's been a lot of heat generated and not much light among those neighbors who are afraid of it, and we would just like to support the change of use. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rick Sebastian. I've known Jeff for years. I've worked for him as a carpenter. And I wanted to come out today and show my support. Just offer a voice of someone who used medicinal marijuana to come off of opiates. After sustaining an injury about three years ago, I lacerated my left wrist. I was on opiates for more than a month straight. And then when I was transitioned to get off opiates, I'm basically given a cocktail of non-opiate drugs, which seemed to affect my life more than opiates. It was Jeff who mentioned that I should try medicinal marijuana, and I can simply say that it was a pivotal point in my recovery, going through physical therapy and workers rehab and not having to rely on painkillers.
Very glad to hear the story. We are focused on zoning issues. For the record, you said your name but not your address.
Rick Sebastian, Salem, New Hampshire.
Okay, thank you. Please focus on zoning issues.
Maggie, Dr. Huff Rusell. I've worked in international health for 25 years, specialized in pharmaceuticals and teach graduate courses on global pharmaceutical policy. 50 Commonwealth Ave, resident of Back Bay, member of NAB. As the attorney mentioned, the Licensing and Building Use Committee of NAB did rule in favor of this. It's the executive, which we don't understand exactly why, that took a stand against it. And I've been blind copied on letters from other members of the executive who are actually in favor of it. When I attended the meeting at the public library, it occurred to me, because I've attended other meetings where I felt people had a legitimate argument for not having a medical marijuana facility in their neighborhood, like Worcester Square. But I think that Newberry Street is absolutely the ideal place for the city to put a medical marijuana dispensary. Because the issue is that people are afraid because they're ignorant. And what we need to do is change the stigma about this. And it would not only be accessible if it were right on Newbury Street, within a block of the number-one bus, but it would also help to eliminate the stigma around medical marijuana. I have a colleague at Harvard who has a prescription for medical marijuana, and he is still buying in a black market because there is not a safe access place for him. So it's a policy issue I think the city should take very seriously about where to locate.
Is there anyone to speak in opposition? And again, I would ask that people not use this as a forum for other policy issues and focus on zoning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Kate Bell, speaking on behalf of Boston City Council Josh Zachem. After careful consideration, extensive discussion with both proponents and neighbors, our office has determined that this location is not the right place for a medical marijuana dispensary. We believe that such a use would not be in the best interest of the neighborhood. As we promised at the outset of this process, we've kept an open mind about the proposal. We've attended numerous public meetings, heard from both the proponent and their supporters, as well as those opposed to the project. We really want to commend Mr. Reilinger and his team for their community outreach and for attempting to reach a compromise with all of our concerned neighbors. But ultimately, after considering all the factors, in our opinion, a medical marijuana dispensary is not an appropriate use for this particular block of Newbury Street. We have serious concerns about traffic, deliveries, and the precedent that this could set for the neighborhood of the Back Bay. We do encourage the proponent to look for an alternative location in this neighborhood that does not abut residences, excuse me, and is not located on what is arguably Boston's premier retail street. Thank you.
But just for the record, the city council did vote in support, correct?
My name is Oliver Kerm. I live in the Burridge Mansion, right around the corner from this proposed dispensary. And all my friends and I are against this because it'll bring undesirable elements into the neighborhood. And just so you know what I mean, there are army vets with PTSD, and we don't want them in their neighborhood. You know, just give me a break. They can get over it. And the second thing is people with wheelchairs, with MS or whatever.
I don't think this is a zoning issue.
Well, I think that the third one is, is women with breast cancer. You know, they always have that cadaverous look, and they wear those ridiculous turbans. And for goodness sake, Newbury Street is our high-end...
Thank you.
It's a high-end shopping district. We don't want people like that scaring off the clientele.
We got your message loud and clear. Thank you.
For the record, Lawrence Estacara, Nixon PBD 100, Summer Street. I'm here on behalf of a number of residents. We have a package that will help to explain some of our arguments. Going to give my old friend Mike Ross a copy as well. The package includes a letter from Mike Jammon, whose partner Vin Norton may or may not have made it this morning, was on an airplane. Owns property directly across the street, directly impacted. Lengthy letter, self-explanatory. There's residents here, NAB is here. You've heard from Councilor Zachem. And I'm going to focus on the appropriate reasons why the board should not grant this relief. And once again, there are handouts which will be more extensive than the presentation I will make. There are confusing messages as to whether this site is, in fact, acceptable because of the proximity of two locations at the music school directly across the street and the Boston Architectural Center, where, quote, "children commonly gather." And the regulations issued by the state, which for the time being are in place until the Canopus Control Commission issues new regulations specifically prohibit that. So why we are even here, given the proximity of 500 feet to two of those facilities, is an appropriate question. A young man who took lessons at the Page Music School, which won the best music lessons for kids, for private and group lessons, spoke in one of the public meetings. And we have an affidavit from a young lady who attended the architectural college diagonally across the street. This is a different location than the 21 Milk Street downtown, which this board approved, where there are not children commonly gathering in the center of the city's commercial core. And there are various regulations back and forth, one of which says they'll defer to the board, which I expect is why we're here, notwithstanding other regulations that suggest a location such as this is not pass muster. a location such as this is not pass muster. And the Cannabis Control Commission is in fact in the middle of an extensive discussion. Among the issues before them is co-location of recreational and medical, and they pursuant to the changes in the state law will have total control over this. And once again, there's lots of information about that. But the real issues are issues of real estate and issues of use. And anyone familiar with the Back Bay understands what it was laid out. It was laid out in a grid. Beacon Commonwealth and Marlborough was strictly residential. Boylston was strictly commercial, especially given there were railroad tracks on the other side where Prudential is until about 55, 60 years ago. And Newbury Street is a mixed-use street with some commercial and some residential, and many people living above the store. And these blocks further out towards Mass Ave. in many cases were carriage houses, small buildings where some of the folks on Commonwealth Avenue would keep their horses. And it has become a residential street above and a commercial street. So we believe the first criterion for the granting is that the new use will not in fact be more detrimental or objectionable than the current use. We believe it would be, and we'll explain the reasons.
Can you explain quickly?
Sure, absolutely. We think it'll adversely affect the neighborhood because of the difficulties with deliveries on narrow streets and an alley. Cash and product has to be delivered via armored trucks. Credit card transactions are not acceptable because the banking system, federally chartered banks cannot deal with marijuana dispensaries because of the federal jurisdictions under Controlled Substances Act. And we think that there'll be hazards of pedestrians and vehicles. Even now on Newbury Street, there are Uber cars with lights flashing blocking that part of Newbury Street day in and day out. I was there at 8:00, 11:35 on a Sunday morning was almost impassable. And these are people who are not going to be browsing with neighborhood stores, they're going to be coming for a specific reason, and going to be, in many cases, probably double parking to do so. We believe that we're an interesting place in the city's history, given that smoking tobacco and smoking marijuana is illegal in most office buildings, most retail locations, in apartment buildings, in most condominium buildings.
I'm really asking you to focus and finish up.
Okay, and therefore we question where people will consume the product, perhaps in the alley. And we think that the specific location, because it is a carriage house protected by the Back Bay Architectural Commission, in fact is not an appropriate facility because of the inability to have the access, the Sally Court, so-called, like entry system called for, and the inability to have major changes to the outside of the building because of the architectural controls.
All right, thank you very much. There's a number of people in line. We have a long agenda today, and I would ask that you be respectful. Mr. Estacara talked about the issue of deliveries, hazards to pedestrians. Basically, this seems like a problem of location. If you don't have anything new to say, please put your name and address in the record and state your opposition, and that's it. Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Martin Ritter, Chair of the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay. Unfortunately, at this point, I do have to correct a grossly distorted version of NAB's position and the process by which we arrived at it that has been presented by Mike Ross and unfortunately by one of our members. The Licensing and Building Use Committee of NAB did not vote to approve this application. It voted not to oppose the process going forward. Had we not done so at that time, when a lot of information that we have since been able to get access to was available to us, the process would have been stopped, and we felt that was unfair. Subsequently, the Executive Committee of NAB, and this has been explained to our member, voted to oppose the application. Now, why? Because in fact of information that we received and opinions based upon the regulations that govern the location of marijuana dispensaries specifying a distance requirement or buffer zone so that most children will only come into contact with or notices operation rarely and fleetingly in passing by, just as when they pass by a liquor store. In contrast, given this location, many children will be regularly, indeed several times every day, permanently and inevitably exposed to its impact. So, now given the basis of NAB's reasons for opposition, an application for a medical marijuana dispensary at a more suitable location in a commercial area not directly abutting residences would well be viewed in a very different light. Nevertheless, the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay respectfully urges the board to reject this application for the reason that I have given, and that has been voted upon by NAB after receiving a lot of comments from residents at the meetings that were held. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, the additional piece of information was about the proximity of children, although that's been brought up before. If you don't have anything new, please state your name and address.
My name is Susan Baker, and I live at 457 Beacon Street, near Hereford. I'm a member of NAB's Executive Committee, and I am involved in planning and organizing events for children in the neighborhood. My son's 13. He walks by the proposed location twice a day to get to the MBTA Hind stop to go to and from school. Hundreds of other kids will be exposed on a daily basis. It's, this location is just too close to the residential area. It abuts the residences on Comm Ave., and we have over 1,500 households with children in the Back Bay area, and despite the buffer zone regulations, children who reside nearby will regularly come into contact with the dispensary. We just don't want Newbury Street, because it directly abuts the residential neighborhood, to be a destination for people to come and procure marijuana. And I urge the board to reject this proposal and ask that the applicant seeks a more appropriate location in a commercial area that doesn't abut the residential one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. My name is Bruce Jacobs. I live at 9 Exeter Street in the Back Bay. We have four young children who go to school within about 1,000 feet of the proposed location. I just would reiterate the importance of considering the impact on children and also the impact on the committee, on the community. Back Bay is an important community. It's one where we want to foster families staying in the city. We want to encourage people to visit the city, and I think this proposed location is exactly the opposite in every regard, so we respectfully ask for your consideration. Thank you.
My name is Marvin Wool. I'm a physician who lives in the Back Bay, and I'd like to remind everybody that we're talking about a medical marijuana dispensary, not a recreational marijuana dispensary. One of the key arguments that the applicant has made is that he will not, he will not convert the medical marijuana dispensary to a recreational marijuana dispensary.
Are you testifying in support or opposition?
In opposition. And I'm in opposition because a section of the lease which he has signed, and I'll read it, it's brief, "If at any time during the term, Lisi elects to discontinue the use of the premises for an RMD and to use the premises solely for the non-medical, that's recreational use of marijuana, the base rent, et cetera." And the applicant has continually pledged that it would only be a medical marijuana dispensary. The information here lies that pledge.
Okay, thank you. Next. Again, please, please be brief.
I'll be brief. My name's Lisa Barth. I live at 356 Commonwealth Ave. I park in the alley directly behind where the proposed dispensary would be. I have a six-year-old daughter, and I don't want it in my neighborhood.
Thank you.
Brian Barth, 356 Commonwealth Avenue. I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Sam Perry, owner of 320, 3327 Newbury Street. I've been a resident of this block since 1946. You have my letter, which has gone into a lot of the information here. I came to the first meeting sponsored by NAB, and then later the city's meeting to learn. I do not oppose the idea of a dispensary as such. I do think there are real problems here, and I think one of them is the absence of regulation. I've noticed that on the Milk Street, on the Patriot Care One, that a community host agreement was negotiated to try to protect the area. I think absent that, and the fact that at the first meeting, it was stated by Council Ross that the dispensary would be restricted to medical only, and at the second meeting, it was stated, no, they couldn't accept that restriction. I think there are problems here, and there should be protections for the residents. And I should also point out that this is a residential block. This is not all commercial, that there are residents across the way at 324, 326, and yeah, there are a number, I think I added up 80 residents within that block.
Okay, thank you very much. In order, for the sake of time, would ask that the applicant respond to some of the issues briefly, some of the issues in particular about the question of it being only your medical marijuana dispensary as opposed to recreational, the issue of children in the neighborhood, deliveries, and blocking the streets, hazards, and pedestrians, and people coming by.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is 100% in favor of being medical only. If it pleases the board, he's happy to have a proviso to that extent attached to the license. There is no bait and switch or any of the conspiracy theories that he's trying to do something else. He has said all along that he will do medical only. There is a loading parking space in the back of the building. It's not required by this project, but we are using it for loading, and that's available off the alley. No one will be loading off the front or double parking. I mentioned, of course, the parking at the garage that will be validated. The, there is a debit card, debit cards are allowed in the dispensary, so it's not a cash-only operation. And there was some numerous comments about this being a nuisance, which does go to the zoning standard, about crime and those issues. And I would just ask that, as former Superintendent Dan Linsky, just give a quick 30 seconds on that.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I have a handle. I've reached out to every police chief who has a current medical marijuana dispensary, dated analysis of the crime before and after. There has been decreases in crime in the areas where these dispensaries are. They are not designed so that the public know what they are, there's no signage that goes on it. And in fact, two police departments have taken police details that they initially put on for fear of challenges, and they've been taking them away. We'll work extensively with my team to not just secure the facility, but we have a process and a program in place to do enforcement with Boston Police in and around the area. Any patient who violates and uses that product anywhere but their home will no longer be a patient of our facility. I can show you that my intent, my entire career is to improve the quality of life of the neighborhoods I've been involved with, and that is my intent to go forward if this project succeeds and we go forward with this.
Has some of those things been put in writing and given to the neighborhood about some of the provisions?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, in your packet, there's a letter written by Dan Linsky, where we, just for the protection of the individual, we did blackout the name, but we stand by that commitment. It was an offer to provide, and that would be under Tab 10. That was in the original packet I sent. The thicker one, I see that a few of you do have. It's a letter from Crawl, and it puts that into writing that we will do police patrols as well as other items. It's just several pages. We're also happy to have that included.
Any questions to the board?
I have a question. What are the hours of operation?
This is 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And if I could add one other piece. Over the last 20 years, teen use has been declining steadily. In Colorado, it's declining even faster. So as more states come and bring medical marijuana or even recreational marijuana, miraculously, teen use is not going up, it's going the opposite direction. Just a fact to bring to the conversation.
I do have another question. Mr. Linsky, can you explain to me how you're going to work the police details and how that, how you're going to collaborate with the Boston Police?
We're going to have a police detail that works with us. We want to check with the community to see when the best times are, when the most impacting neighborhoods. We understand there's already some concerns with use of marijuana and other items on the Commonwealth Mall. We would hire details that we would pay for. We'd often hire them on overtime if the BPD would allow it to make it an assignment that they would always fill, but that depends on their staffing level. My staff would work with BPD to go out and patrol the neighborhoods. BPD would take enforcement action. We would be able to identify anyone who was a patient of ours that was impacting the neighborhood negatively. We would go back and remove them from the rolls and give them the trespasses. And we would supplement BPD's ability to patrol the neighborhood with additional patrols that currently they don't have the staffing.
What about the concerns about children in the area?
If I may take that, this is a common concern that's been lobbed at pretty virtually every dispensary. The location he's questioning, we are well familiar with. I think in his own comments, he may have inadvertently discredited this issue by describing it as private lessons. Those private lessons take it out of the realm of a place where children commonly gather in a consistent and regular manner. There is-
There's been testimony to families in the neighborhood, so.
Sure. I mean, the mere presence of children who live or walk by or near would not exclude these because there wouldn't be one anywhere, because children live everywhere, children visit everywhere. I mean, they're in the, when you deep dive into the regulations, it will say, talk about how ice cream places and things like that, just even though they gather for birthdays and things like that, don't constitute a place where children commonly gather. We're talking about nursery schools, we're talking about schools, those types of things. The new regulations even back off about, from that. They only go to schools. They've gotten rid of this kind of messy area. And finally, there is another agency that looks at that. It's the Boston Public Health Commission. They have regulations that they promulgate that speak to the children commonly gather. I don't think the intent was ever that the zoning Board of Appeal wrestle that matter. I think it's always been intended that it go to the Public Health Commission.
Yeah, I want to keep this focus on zoning issues.
I just want, if you could address the pedestrian, the traffic issue. I think somewhere in the documents, I see you anticipate about 350 visits per day, and just explain how that is managed, since that is a concern.
Sure. 300, 350 visitors per day spaced out over the times of 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM is substantially less than virtually anything on that street. You know, Starbucks or a clothing store are into the thousands. The average time per patient is, on their first visit, probably about 15 minutes, maybe 20 at the absolute most. On their all subsequent visits, and many are repeat, are more like, is more like 10 minutes. And so over the throughput of the day, it will appear not busy. And it will, as we also mentioned, we're going to have parking available. Our customers will be repeat customers. They will know, they can park around the-
Parking.
So as much as is required. We have an agreement within-
Somerset Garage.
Somerset Garage, which is in the same block or within a block away, and patients will know they can park there for free. Come in, buy their product, and then leave in that same parking.
Now, is this by appointment, or is this-
It is not.
They come through?
They come whenever they're available, which is-
I have to interfere. I'm trustee for the Somerset Garage. No arrangement has been made.
Hang on, hang on. We've finished taking public testimony.
Sorry.
Do you want to speak in favor or oppose?
I'm opposed to it, and I also know that absolutely no arrangement-
Okay.
-has been made with the Somerset Garage.
Hang on a second, if you want.
I'll come back whenever it's time.
No, all right, go ahead, but say your name and address for the record, and very quickly the reason for your opposition.
I am Dr. Patricia Brown. I own 50 Hereford Street, which is a half-block from 331. I vehemently oppose this facility. I have been trustee for 18 years, never missed a meeting at the Somerset Garage. Absolutely no one has asked us. First of all, it is a owner-occupied building. We have very few spaces. We could never commit to that. If you can give me the name of one individual that okayed this to you at this moment, I'll listen. But I know better because I have been there for 18 years, and I've never missed a meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor.
That's not, that's, I just can't believe they're bringing this up.
Okay.
Now, a block from there is my office, 396 Commonwealth Avenue. I am an orthodontist, and I know the age group that is in that area that they want to bring this. Most people are under the age of 21. This is a very bad area.
Okay, thank you.
Just on that point.
Final comment?
Yeah. The applicant did speak to someone named Yosef, who's at the garage. We obviously aren't going to contract with them until we're approved here. I'm not sure what level of interaction the board gets from these types of queries. We are 100% committed to offering free parking. There are many parking garages in the area. We're happy to have that as a stipulation on the zoning.
Okay. Any other questions to the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the lease requested with the following provisos, that it is absolutely restricted to medical marijuana only. Any change in that would require coming back to this board. That prior to signature, we need a document that outlines the parking and the commitment made. We'll hold signature until that is provided to us.
Anthony, can I ask a question of that motion?
Yes, sir.
Do we want to tie it to a certain amount of spots? Do we want to tie it to a certain amount of spots?
I--
Do we need 10 spots, five spots, three spots? I mean--
I think you could say a minimum. I don't think--
I need 10?
Again, we have a prudential garage, we have--
Okay.
There's plenty of parking there.
I'm asking you on your motion, Anthony, do you want to add that?
We will, for a minimum of 10.
Okay. And I would also suggest that the document that Mr. Pizzani's talking about have a general safety plan, that Mr. Linsky did, so the community can know that you're going to make commitments and make promises, they can hold you accountable.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm with you on that.
Okay. So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing that we're running a little bit behind, at this time, I'm going to call for any deferrals or withdrawals for 1030. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 1030? Please come to the microphone. Before we start, I'm going to call, I need you at the microphone, sir.
No, the podium back there.
Podium. I'm calling-- Excuse us. Excuse us.
People, please move out. Thank you. Keep quiet until you get--
I'm actually going to call for, final call for 108 Greenfield Street. 108 Greenfield Street, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, come forward.
Hang on one second.
I apologize. I'm going to take 108 Greenfield Street first, and then I'm going to ask for deferrals BOA, I'm going to call back into record, BOA 475-053, 108 Greenfield Street, asking for an extension.
Good morning, Javier Molina. I'm actually not representing, but here to speak on behalf of my boss, Leonardo Peña. Basically, what had happened, I guess they had granted before the construction, but he was waiting, he didn't understand fully the process. He was waiting on his architect, and by that time, when he went back, was ready to build, the certificate was expired.
So it's already expired?
It's already expired. It expired this year.
What, when?
August of this year. So when we went into, finally, we spoke to a couple people. I spoke to a couple people because he didn't know what he was doing. Went to 1010, and they had told us that we had to write an appeal to get an extension.
Okay, typically, the extensions are granted during the term of the permit.
Of the permit, correct.
Right, but not after they've expired.
Okay. He wasn't aware of that? He was under the impression that he had to wait for his architect to get back to him with paperwork?
Yeah, can I have a motion, please?
What type of project is this?
It's just basically a live-in extension. His daughter, he wants to bring his daughter back into the home. And honestly, what they had told him, from my understanding, was that the staircase is just a little bit narrow. It's like they have to extend it like one foot more in order for her to live down the legal--
Relief was granted by this board, is that correct?
I'm assuming yes.
And you have a building permit, is that correct?
Correct. So it's expired now. He was under the impression that his architect was going to do everything. He has since lost contact with his architect, so I'm just helping--
How's it going to go forward then, without an architect?
Well, no, he has all the plans and everything that he needs to build that was approved.
I'm going to make a motion to grant an extension, but it's three months. There's no reason why this contract going. If you are not--
Is there any way that we can do at least six months, so we can--
No, no, because you're going out. Three months.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion of seven, for three months and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Just understand that it's, permit expires, so it's somebody's program--
Correct.
All right.
Thank you.
Calling for extensions or-- Calling for extensions for 1030.
Withdrawals.
All withdrawals for 1030.
Withdrawal for 1030?
Yeah, can you give me the address, sir?
Two addresses. 88 Pierce Street and 71 Davidson Street as well.
Okay, so we'll call into record, Davidson's the first one I find. It's 71 Davidson Street, BOA number 663-803. And how can we help you today?
Well, I'd like to withdraw. We found out just last week, these two are related because what we're doing is subdividing Davidson into two parcels, an existing, two family on--
So the companion cases?
I'm sorry?
Companion cases, sir?
Yes.
All right, let me call into record, BOA 663-799, 88 Pierce Street.
Okay, so you want to withdraw both of them?
Yes, they're related. 71 Davidson is a two-family, large parcel, was subdividing the parcel in order for the owner, who lives in 71 Davidson, can construct a two-family on 88 Pierce. We just found out just last week, latter part of the week, that there's opposition from two groups we had, weren't aware of. We had a butters meeting, I thought it was quite successful, but because of the lateness of the opposition, we want to go back and regroup and meet with these folks--
You want to withdraw, I'm sorry to interrupt.
--and maybe make some major changes.
Okay, sir, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for withdrawal.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Sir, name and address for the record.
204 Warren Street.
402 Warren Street. BOA number 744-379.
I would like to defer.
Is there a companion case, sir?
No.
You sure?
Yeah, there's two of them. There's two of them together. I'll call that into record also. BOA 744-378 and BOA 744-379, companion cases. You're looking for a deferral, sir?
Yes, we are.
Is this your first deferral?
Yes, it is.
What's the reason for the deferral?
Well, we haven't had the parking situation finished up yet. We're still working on parking.
Okay, we have January 9th, sir, available. Does that work?
Yes.
Great, January 9th.
Hang on, motion to--
I apologize. Motion to defer.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and Mr. Pizzani, give you a date.
January 9th, sir, at 11:30. Okay, if we can go back to 25 Dry Dock Avenue, BOA 763020. The purpose of this is a no-work. Change of use includes fitness center, gym for the public in first and second floor. Gym construction occurred under permits ALT 709-412 and ALT 709-414. Space to be used for employees only until change of use is accepted. Article 8, Section 3, conditional use, private club conditional.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Michael Vaughn. I'm here on behalf of Reebok and Jamestown. I'm from 19 Dry Dock Avenue. I'm here with Keith Wetzelblatt and Austin Malo from Reebok. I'm here today to talk to you about the Innovation Design Building. Jamestown, in the last, since 2013, has invested $140 million in the building. You can see window replacements, elevators, the whole thing. If you haven't been down there, I strongly encourage you to come visit. In doing so, they've attracted a host of great tenants, Autodesk, Continuum, Mass Challenge, America's Test Kitchen, that have all moved in in the last couple of years. This year, we were fortunate enough to sign Reebok up to move their headquarters from Canton. They moved 700 employees into 200,000 square feet. Great facility. It's mega space, it's design space, innovation space. We've got a good working relationship with our landlord, the BPDA, and Reebok has been a wonderful addition to the Ray Quinn Marine Park. As part of their development, they built a gym, which is approximately 30,000 feet. It's open to their employees. We're here today to ask for relief to allow it to be open to other tenants of the Innovation and Design Building. We've met with the South Boston electeds, we've met with the Ray Quinn Marine Park Association, we've talked to John Allison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we've included a letter of support from the BPDA. So I respectfully ask your support for this relief today.
So this is, but it's not open to anyone from the outside?
It's open to tenants in the Innovation Design Building only. So it's open, it's Reebok's gym--
And employees--
--and then other tenants in the building. So if you look at--
Right, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not open to anybody from outside the building.
Is there a cost associated?
Yes, it's, it would be between $200 and $300 a month, depending on what services you select.
Okay, Mr. Pizzani, how's drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
All right, anyone here to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to go on record in support. As the proponents noted, they have met with and received support from the businesses in the area. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my behalf, the representative of the Carpenters Union, we'd like to go on record in support.
Anyone here to speak in opposition? Any questions to the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Calling the next case, BOA 754-688, Head House Edition. Article 68, Section 6, dimensional requirement, side setback requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, dimensional requirement, rear yard setback requirement is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, dimensional requirement, floor area ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, dimensional requirement, height requirement is excessive. Article 27S, Section 5, South Boston iPod applicability, iPod applicability. Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, roof structure restrictions, restricted district. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Beth McDougal. I'm the architect for the client. Address, I'm over in Chelsea.
William Davis, property owner, 177 East Street.
Patricia is out there with Beth McDougal Architects in Chelsea.
Okay, would you like to describe the proposal and what variances you're seeking?
Yes, currently, there is a head house that exists on top of the building itself and the stairs, with the stairs. What we're proposing to do is to renovate that stair head house, keeping the stairs as they are, and as you come up, adding a small room with a, like a powder room with the deck. So if you have a morgue, you have to have it go downstairs.
What's the size of current head house?
The current head house is about eight by eight.
And the proposed?
And the proposed goes from the side of the house to the side of the house, which would be 20 feet wide. And then we're coming forward, the head house is on the back of the house, the back right corner or left corner, and we're bringing it forward five feet to add a little bathroom.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate.
How many units is in this house?
Three.
Three, and would the deck be accessible for all units, or just the third floor?
Just like I said, the third floor.
Query, why isn't this simply a fourth-floor addition?
Well, they were cited for height, so I think it was interpreted as a fourth-floor addition, because as you know, a penthouse, if it's less than one-third of the roof area, doesn't count towards height. So if they were cited for height, I'm assuming that ISD said that it was a fourth-story addition.
Okay, okay. So it's just a matter of--
Yeah.
Okay.
And is the height of the proposed head house the same as the height of the existing?
It's two and a half feet higher. So right now, it's got a seven-foot ceiling on the stair, but it only has like two-by-six little beams. So we were going to raise that so it would have an eight-foot height when you come in, and of course, the beam, you know, today is a little deeper. That gives us the two and a half. So we have an eight-foot ceiling, it's down to seven-foot ceiling.
Anyone here to speak in favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, because this is within the Article 68 zoning, we cannot go on record in support of the variances, but in this case, we did have a very successful butters meeting. This is a good project that will keep a longtime family in the neighborhood, and people were very supportive of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, behalf of the council, Michael Flaherty, due to the efforts of the community that went into drafting Article 68, the council at this particular time cannot support the project. However, would defer to the board's infinite wisdom on this project.
It's infinite, that wall.
It's different from last year.
I can't wait for next.
This is good.
All right. Any questions to the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Design review?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Provisor, if you can.
Thank you. Calling in the next case, BOA 752-0, I'm sorry, 752-309, renovate existing three-family row house as per plan submitted. The violations are Article 27S, Section 5, South Boston iPod applicability. Name and address for the record, sir.
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranty with a business address of 350 West Broadway for 169A, 169I Street. The proposed project before you is a renovation of an existing three-family, a gut renovation, and as a result, it triggers the interim planning overlay district, which is conditional use. It is entirely dimensionally compliant, and there are no projections or additions, with the exception of the rear enclosed porch, which is already counted as FAR, as it is an enclosed porch. Will be finished and heated and cooled, but it does meet the FAR of 2.0 according to the plans. What you have is the cover sheet before you with the zoning, and then a sample layout plan and a revised plan that's been submitted to Mr. Pizzani.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pizzani?
Drawings are adequate. How many units?
There's three now, and there will be three when it's completed.
And there's independent access to the basement, to the--
Yes, there is. There's an existing--
To the utility.
Yep, access from the rear.
Right.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Allison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, this was cited only under the iPods. We are able to support it. We did hold a butters meeting, and there were no objections raised. Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Do you need exterior work?
No, no BPDA review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. How are we doing with our friends in the back in terms of timing? Need a break, or you all set? Good? Okay. Let's, let's, yeah, let's take a five-minute break, and let's really try to keep it, the board will adjourn and come back at 11:05.
Okay, we're gonna call our next case, BOA 759918. The address is two nine six nine Washington Street. The purpose is to, um, add dwelling unit at ground level, change occupancy from three units to four units per plans, permit to be submitted upon ZBA approval. This is one of the four main structures on the lot. The violations are as follows, Article fifty, section forty-three, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, dimensional requirement, lot area ratio, I'm sorry, lot area dwelling unit insufficient. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, dimensional requirement, floor area ratio excessive. Article fifty, section twenty-nine, dimensional requirement, usable open space insufficient. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jeff Drago, attorney for City Realty, uh, business address of fifteen Broad Street, Drago &amp; Toscano. Here with Josh Fetterman, the applicant, and I'll chew from Chewing Associates. Purpose of, uh, today is to seek zoning relief at two nine six nine Washington Street in Roxbury. We're looking to change the occupancy from the three-family to a four-family building by legalizing a garden-level apartment, um, at the bottom level. That's, uh, excuse me, that size, it would be five hundred and eighty-one square feet with a ceiling height of nine feet, four inches. Two means of egress, the building is currently fully sprinklered, uh, and that will continue down into the garden level. As I mentioned, this area is a multi-family residential, so this garden-level apartment is quite common in, um, this section of Roxbury. We had a sponsored butter meeting, there was no opposition, uh, nothing but support that we have heard. Our violations are all pre-existing. The only one that's increased is the FAR going from one point seven eight to one point eight eight, and obviously parking is one per unit as a requirement. The building was completely gut renovated a few years back. When my clients purchased it, it was in really rough shape, and they cleaned it up. We'll continue to do so. I can pause now to answer any questions.
When, when you say garden level, I mean, really, it's below grade, right?
Uh, it's eighty-nine percent above grades, that's just another picture.
The, the grade drops considerably from street level to the rear, so on the back, it's above grade, but on the Washington Street side, it's below grade, so-
Right, I see a sort of eyebrow window something, uh, on the front.
Yeah, on the front, and then as you go to the back, uh, the grade drops down. I can pass this to the board. This would be the floor level in the rear, so it's about four feet above grade as you get to the back of the building.
The-
How are the drawings, Mr. Bizani?
Uh, the drawings are adequate. The building mechanical are independent of this unit, is that correct? That is, you can get access to the building and mechanicals without having to go through the machine.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I mean, the building's already been renovated, correct? And so what, what has the space been used for up until now?
Uh, it's just empty. There's, uh, a few water tanks and the, the sprinkler, uh, mechanical. So there's an area at the front of the building where it's most below grade will remain for utilities and sprinkler room, access from the front common area.
And the unit would be a one dead room.
Mr. Bizani, are the utilities are accessible by all the units?
Yes. There's a, there's a separate stair that goes, also the stair that provides access to the intended unit. The intended unit also has a stair career. But the mechanical room can be accessed without having to go through the unit, and it can be accessed by everybody.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this project. We had a good butters meeting. The individuals who did show up, they were in support of the project as well, and as in that way, in support of the project.
Anyone here in opposition? Any questions from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's no need for, it's all interior work, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, um, calling our next case, BOA 740-342. Thirty-six Cushing Ave. Change occupancy from a three-family to a four-family with two proposed off-street parking. Extend living space in additional fourth dwelling into basement. Construct new side entry porch. Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading requirement, insufficient off-street parking and inability of maneuverability. Article sixty-five, section eight, use regulations, multi-family dwelling is forbidden use. Article sixty-five, section eight point two, use regulate, regulations, basement units. Dwelling units in basement are forbidden in Dorchester Neighborhood District. Article sixty-five, section nine, additional lot area insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, floor area ratio excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard insufficient. Article sixty-five, nine point two, location of main entrance, within the residential sub-district, the main entrance of the dwelling shall face the front lot line. I'm gonna call for name and address, um, of the property, but after that, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is James Rudser. My office is at five forty-six East Broadway in South Boston. Sitting to my right is Robert Jake Federico, trustee of the thirty-six Cushing Ave Realty Trust, a trust that was originally created by his grandfather. We're seeking the requested variances in order to essentially legalize a use that has been on this property since nineteen thirty-six. Mr. Federico's grandfather bought the property in nineteen fifty-three, at which time it was a four-family home. There are records at ISD that show that back in nineteen thirty-six, it was converted from a private hospital to a four-family home. At some point in the nineties, Mr. Federico's grandfather stopped using the property for any use, and therefore, that non-conforming use as a four-family was considered abandoned. The boys have, uh, this is a house that their father, uh, was brought up in, they intend, uh, they've already done the renovation of the existing, uh, three units, and, um, they intend to live there and reside in the community. We've had a chance to present the plans to the Jones Hill Neighborhood Association at one of their meetings, and we received the unanimous support of the association, who are particularly enthusiastic about the, the, the quality of work that they undertook and the fact that they intend to reside there. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, Mr. Bizani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions, um, any board members? Uh, is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Ellison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Flavio De Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. This has been through the community process, including getting a unanimous vote of support from the Jones Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
My name is Nadine Fallon, and until recently, in September, I was a direct of butter. Um, on Mount, for Mount Cushing Terrace, I recently moved there, but, um, I'm now at twenty-six Peral Street, also on Jones Hill, and, uh, they do beautiful work, it's a beautiful property, um, and I think that this will be in addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone here to speak in opposition?
Hello, I own a two-family on Mount Cushing Terrace, um, and-
Can you put your name on the record, please?
Yes, it's Kelly Thomas at ten Mount Cushing Terrace, um, and I'm, while we admire the work, um, clearly there's a high quality of work that's being done there, we oppose the use of the basement for an apartment, um, because as the zoning code states, that the purpose of the residential sub-districts is to maintain, enhance, and promote the character of residential neighborhoods in terms of density, housing type, and design, to provide for low and medium-density housing appropriate to the existing built, um, environment. So the existing built environment is primarily two and three-family units. All, um, all of the houses have basements, um, and so what my concern is, and my husband's concern, and my neighbors at eight Mount Cushing Terrace, and equally at eleven Mount Cushing Terrace, we're concerned about increased density in the neighborhood. We believe that the zoning codes were established for a logical reason. And as I understand it, in order to obtain a variance, one must show special and peculiar circumstances or conditions of the land or building, uh, or in reasons of practical difficulty and demonstrable and substantial hardship, and that the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning code. Also, I'd like to say that, um, we're very concerned about parking in the neighborhood. Recently, another abutter at fifteen Uppam Ave submitted a petition, um, to obtain residential parking stickers, um, because in the past few years, the amount of vehicles in the neighborhood has increased substantially, and so the residents are having trouble parking. So we're concerned that more people, um-
Thank you. Do you want to respond to the issues of, uh, Mark?
If I may, um, it's, it always was a four-unit building. The only thing that we've done is changed the configurations of the unit so that the fourth unit, instead of being a very, very small attic unit, is more of an appropriately-sized garden-level unit, and we've accomplished that by doing excavation that creates parking spaces that never existed on the property. So it's not a true basement, it's a walkout, um, because we've created, we've reconfigured the, the existing unit, and then also in the process, created parking for the neighborhood.
Mr. Bizani, the ceiling height and mechanical rooms are all-
They're all greater than, than adequate.
Okay. All right, uh, is there a, uh, can I have a motion? No, no.
Motion for approval.
What, do you want to speak as well?
Yes, it's my name, I'm sorry.
All right, please come up to the microphone, uh, put your name and address on the record and briefly-
Susan Byers Paxton. I live at nineteen Uppam Avenue, I have lived there for thirty years. I have a prepared statement that I would be happy to give you all copies of.
If you could summarize it, we'd appreciate it.
I will try, and I apologize if I am redundant, because I only heard the very end of what you had to say. I am, I am also speaking about the parking, because when I first moved to the neighborhood, it was much less dense. There were probably maybe one or two cars per building, and we're talking mostly three-deckers, family occupied with extended families. Now, thirty years later, it's all condominiums. Every multi-family house, as it becomes available, is turned into more condominiums, and no parking provision is made. They obviously have been obtaining variances of their own, which allow them to build, for instance, number forty Cushing Avenue, the mansion, six units, no parking, plus they turned their side yard into two units with only one car per unit, although most of these condominiums have two people in each one of them, and each one of those people has a car. Parking is now a nightmare in the neighborhood. The number seven Uppam Avenue, a two-family house converted to three condominiums, six people, six cars, no place to put them. The Strand, when it's in operation, and of course, we love the Strand, it's beautiful. Every neighborhood used to have one, we still have ours, but there's no place for these people to park. They take our parking places because there's nowhere else for them to park, so when we come home, there's no place for us to park. And now, this gentleman, these, these people want to, they already have three units in a house where one guy used to live forever. That means there will probably be six people, and there will probably be six more cars. Now they want to add another unit, two more people, two more cars, and they are only putting two parking places. There is no parking to be had, and you can't just say, well, the plan is to make this a walkable, agreeable neighborhood where people will just wander about. But the truth is that if we don't use the commuter rail that they're talking about, about fixing up, we don't go over there. Everyone I know and I use the red line to get about, and the only way to get to the red line is to either have someone drop you off or take a bus and then a train. When the train and the bus schedule become so onerous that it's two, it takes an hour to an hour and a half just to get to and from work, people are going to drive, and you're not going, you're not going to disabuse them of the notion of having a car. But when you continually set aside what I had understood to be a one point five to one ratio of parking spaces that are supposed to be allowed per unit, and, and this is continually set aside so that the most three recent developments in our neighborhood, six units, two units, three units, a total of two parking places for all of those units, everyone else is on the street.
Okay, thank you.
I can't even begin to tell you about the street cleaning.
All right, can I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Yes, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling DOA 761601, fifty-four Pleasant Street. New construction of seventeen-unit residential project, existing structure ought to be raised and, and on a separate permit. So we have a companion case? Violation, Article sixty-five, section sixty-five dash four-one, off-street loading requirement, none proposed. Article sixty-five, section thirty-nine, screening and buffering, none proposed. Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading requirement, insufficient parking. Article sixty-five, section forty-two, applicable of dimensional requirements, conformity with existing building alignment. Article sixty-five, section eight, use regulations forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, insufficient side yard setback. Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, max allowed height has been exceeded. Article sixty-five, section nine, dimensional regulations, excessive FAR. Article eighty, design review process, it's been approved. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney John Pelgeni, ten Forbes Road, Braintree. Good morning. With me this afternoon, this morning, is Steve Souza, who's the architect on this project, as well as Joey Akari, who is, Joey Akari, who is the owner. So the proposal before you, um, is currently, the parcel is currently the Scully Treys Funeral Home on fifty-four Pleasant Street. The zoning in the neighborhood is two-family, five thousand. Uh, the proposal is to build seventeen condominium units with twenty below-grade parking spots and ten enclosed bike spaces. The lot size is fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight square feet. There'll be nine, excuse me, five one-bedrooms, nine two-bedrooms, and three three-bedrooms. We went through a, a very lengthy, um, community process, actually, uh, just coming up on a year. Um, as, um, Mr. Galvin had stated, this is a BRA, Article eighty, and it was approved by the BRA Board, um, back in September.
How are the drawings, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board?
I do. Counselor, can you read to me again? Five one-bedrooms?
Uh, yes, um, excuse me. There is going to be five one- Yes, excuse me. There is going to be five one-bedrooms, nine two-bedrooms, and the five one-bedrooms are going to be square-footed, 760 square feet to 960 square feet. The nine two-bedrooms will be 960 square feet to 1,135 square feet, and the three three-bedrooms will be between 1,550 square feet to 1,620 square feet.
These are rentals, right?
These are condominiums. The project actually started as rentals. It was a much more dense project at the time, but through the community process, they requested that they changed from apartments to condominiums, and we did that as, throughout, you know, negotiated through the process. So, the BRA, there'll be two affordable units. In addition to that, Mr. Bezani, there's also been a $20,000 commitment to several groups, Project Deep, the Bird Street Community Center, Edgeworth School, and DOD.
And affordables are representative, that's one's a one-bedroom or one's a two-bedroom? Is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm sorry, there's two of them?
There is.
Is that 20,000 total or 20,300?
20,000 total. So, it will be divided up between those four organizations, $5,000 per organization. There's 20 underground, so this is actually, the parking's contained, not only contained, it's underground, so it's, there's 20 spots.
And there's one access point to the park?
There is. Through an existing curb cut that's currently on the property.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. Apologize for that. You should be doing it.
Forget what to say when it's not Madam Chair anymore. Mr. Chairman, Chairman Gerga, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support today.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Councilor Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Hey, Dean Fallon, 26 Pearl Street. I'm, just in disclosure, I'm also a real estate broker that is, has an interest in this project happening, but as a neighbor, I'm also in support of this project.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, David Arini. On behalf of City Council President Michelle Wu, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Galvair. I live at 46 Pearl Street. I'm a direct abutter to the project, and I'd like to state my support for the project. Joey's been very helpful in changing the design in order to give us more setback from our building. He's been really helpful and considerate and made two adjustments, which was really excellent, and I think the project is a beautiful development. I think it would be a catalyst for more development for the area. I think we need more people to come into this area and get businesses and restaurants, and I would like to see the whole area move in that direction. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe Castro, 22 Tap Street. I also have to disclose I have a financial interest as a Realtor in this project, but as a resident, I also support this project.
Is anybody speaking in opposition?
Bruce Shatswell, 26 Grant Street, Dorchester. We just saw a number of people speak in support, which clearly demonstrated the steamrolling tactic that was used by this developer in packing meetings and other things. My issue, however, I oppose this project strongly on the basis of density. It started as 21 units, went to 17. The comparisons used for density are questionable. The only one mentioned in a public meeting was in Ashmont, which is a mile and a half away. This is a family neighborhood with large lots and two- and three-family homes. This board approved a three-decker across the street with strong support from the neighborhood within the last year it fit in. At 125 Stoughton Street, which is of invisible sight of this building, which was not considered in comparisons, this board turned down a proposal by David George to develop 12 units in 2010 on a 9,000 lot. It approved, two years ago, building six units on that lot, which has been built, and which, in full closure, I helped with the historical part because it was a colonial cottage on the property. That building has been in sight of this location. The neighbors supported it. It met all the requirements that were required in this board to support it. I cannot in good conscience see how our city solicitor, our city councillors and other people can support a density busting project like this with a flawed process on this board. If you approve this process, it'll be a time and a half the density of what you approved less than a block away. I don't understand it, and I urge you to oppose it.
Dan Sterling, 47 Pearl Street. I'm a direct abutter to the property. I also oppose this in regards to the density. The lot is owned for six units altogether, to my understanding, and 17 is far too many. We're worried about cramming more people into the neighborhood. We're worried about becoming South Boston. There's a reason I bought in Savin Hill, and they're trying to change the nature and the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sonia Keshuba. I'm a resident at 37 Pearl Street, a few houses down from the proposed project. I've been helping since January of this year organize the neighbors to keep everyone informed, try to help spearhead educating people who weren't aware of this project, and I submitted and was copied on multiple emails that was sent over to the Board of Appeals. There are over 25 official comments that I was copied on, multiple other mail, emails, and mailed letters that I do not have copies of, and I also shared a petition with 126 people who signed opposing this project, mentioning that they are not comfortable with the size and scale of 17 condo units. As a group, we have come together multiple times as abutters. We had Councilor Frank Baker joining us at the church that's directly across the street from this development, and we have been told time and time again that the concerns and the opinions of the neighbors does matter, but however, at the BPDA, they threw away our petition with, that had 100 signatures at that point. At this point, it has 126 and continuously growing. We've been going door-to-door with flyers, and every time we go one street further from the project, there are at least five to 10 neighbors who were completely unaware of the project and are shocked by the size and scale of it. So, I want to go on the record that the petition, even though the location somehow from change.org, which is the website I used to create the petition, lists locations other than Dorchester, they're not accurate. I have a printed copy here. I'll provide you, and I've made some notes. Thank you. I've made some notes on people that I know live directly across the street, around the corner, and on Pleasant Street, so I'm not sure how the website polls it, but I urge you to not dismiss the results of the petition because the 126 neighbors are from door-to-door efforts and people that were walking their dogs and were unaware of the project until we've let them know that.
Can you hand the material to...
Good morning. My name is Anna Cardona. I live in 43 Pearl Street, and I am not as polished as I should be to approach you, but I just wanted to present to you a vision of what goes on in my street. During the winter time, we lose a lot of spots to the snow because there is nowhere to put the snow. There are being fights between neighbors because of parking spots. It's already very crowded. It's already very nightmarish to be there in the middle of the winter. And with this huge project, which is a beautiful project, I love the building. I would love to see a building like that instead of a funeral home, but all of these people are going to have guests. 20 parking spots, one in front of the other, are not going to alleviate the parking needs of these neighbors. I love people. I love diversity, but we are already crowded. I went to see a house for sale, and by accident, it happened to be a house next to where the mayor, Marty Wells, lives, and I closed my eyes and I say, "Why can my street look like that? Is it too much to ask to have my street looking the way the street where the mayor lives?" It's a beautiful street. There is plenty of parking. It's a dream. It's a dream that I cannot afford, and I will, I will want to stay where I'm at. I don't want to be pushed out of my neighborhood. The people that are doing these projects, I would like to touch upon their heart. I know they have a lot of money. I don't have that kind of money to fight against them. All I want to do is present to you our reality right now. We already are in trouble. Thank you very much. God bless you.
So, I just was going to finish my comment. So, I gave the copy of the petition results and some of the emails, and I just wanted to mention that the underground parking is tandem spots, which I think is a little misleading because the tandem spots, one in front of the other. Anyone who knows that knows that the first person in, you know, they're not going to get blocked in, and they'd rather take a street spot. So, you know, I think the concerns about density, overcrowding, cramming too many people, and then cars where our, if every unit has one to two cars, you know, if there's 18 spots, we might have 34 cars added to this area. So, just to kind of leave you guys with a few thoughts, we did win the vote opposing at the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association meeting where the opposition, we were a majority against this, and as I mentioned, the BPDA threw away the petition results, but that's not accurate. And, you know, as stated on the zoning board website, codes keep developers from creating buildings that don't fit a neighborhood or would cause disruptions. For example, zoning code allows a homeowner to build an addition, but doesn't allow an auto body shop to open in a residential area. So, I ask that you please kindly review all of our comments and please take into strong consideration before approving this project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eileen Boyle, and during the start of this process, I was president of Columbia Savin Civic Association, so I met with all of the abutters and the developers during this process. One of the things that's disappointing is that from the very beginning, Council Baker and BPDA repeatedly told the abutters that this lot was only zoned for six units. With that belief, they were willing to go to nine, possibly 12, units during the conversations with the abutters, but for whatever reason, you know, they have stuck with the 17 units. This lot here, also at one of the meetings where the BPDA had attended, I specifically asked Mr. Campbell about Article 80 and what that meant, because one of the civic association's concerns is that directly beside this lot is another lot. So, Mr. Akari bought his lot for $1.6 million. Directly beside that, at the corner of Thornley Street and Pleasant Street, is a lot that we believe is going to be sold for $3 million. So, does that mean that that person gets, you know, 30 units, you know? So, and I asked Mr. Campbell, I said, "You know, under Article 80, what does the BPDA do? What does that mean? Does that, do they look at the surrounding lots? Do they look at the area? Do they understand?" And they said they do not, which I don't understand that. There's like, one of the frustrations with the civic association is that there's no urban planning being done, that these buildings are being erected lot by lot, and this lot is in a thickly settled, family-orienteded neighborhood. We don't have a problem, you know, along Dorchester Ave, at the corner of Freeport and Hancock Street, the dog block. We don't have a problem with that. This area here needs to stay more residential-friendly. There's a school across the street, and we are terrified now that this adjacent lot is now going to be developed. You get it? Okay. But also, unfortunately, during this process, the abutters were also told, when the BPDA had their hearing about this project, someone from the BPDA office, I will not name that person, I will tell you, you know, told the abutters that they should not attend the hearing because it was just for the developer, and we know that's not true.
Okay, that's their part, but we're focused on ours. Any questions or comments from the board? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to push the podium back somewhere? Turn around. We'll never get out.
Read the next case. Read the next case, BOA 756628, 16 Clayborne Street. Purpose of one off-street parking with proposed curb cut. Article 10, Section 01, limitation of area of accessory uses. Article 65, Section 9, dimensional regulations, usable open space insufficient. Can I please have your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good morning. My name is Caesar De Silva. Here representing Romero Fonseca. And we are here before you today, appealing for the variance on Articles 10, Section 1, limitation of area accessory uses, and Article 65, Section 9, dimension of relation, of regulations. We were, my client is proposing to put a one-off-street parking for the reason that the mother-in-law here are handicapped and have to park so far away and walk to the house, and we come before you to help us grant a curb cut in one off-street parking for the family. And we have a plan in the letter from the neighborhood. Excuse me, may I?
Is the curb cut now of-street parking?
It doesn't exist now. We proposing a curb cut.
No, no, no. I get that, but what I'm asking is, are you essentially replacing one-street parking opportunity with one off-street?
To another off-street, mainly for the reason of handicap.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Bob Demico, BTD. I have reviewed this, and we cannot, as a matter of policy, approve a curb cut taking away parking because there is parking on this side of the street as there is in front of this house. The only thing that's sort of odd is when I went on the computer, I noticed that there was an HP parking space in front of this very house, and if it's gone for some, whatever reason, they can always reapply and get HP parking for the applicant.
The issue is exactly that. It's a replacement of one-to-one. It's the privatization of the public way. So, Caesar, is there a handicap spot in front?
No, there isn't.
I recommend...
It is. It's a handicap. It was from my tenant, but she passed away. Actually, the husband and wife passed away, so that's the reason the handicap spot there. I already talked to, called the city, I talked to Mr. Favio to remove the handicap spot there.
Why not now keep it? Doesn't your mother-in-law qualify for a handicap spot?
No, she's, she's not qualified for the handicap. I didn't ever apply for it, and she didn't qualify for it. She's not really handicapped. She's old. She's 81 years old. Sometimes I took her to the hospital. My wife took her to the hospital. We go grocery shopping. We come back, no parking in the street. We got parked far away in the wintertime.
I would suggest that the best way to do this, in fact, is apply for the handicap spot.
Mr. Bezani, my point of view, or let's say on this matter, is that they invested on that street buying a house. Having off-street parking or somebody else parking, there are visitors and strangers, and the owners of the house cannot benefit, and off-street and people, neighbor, or let's say visitors have more, more benefits of parking than they do. That's, that I don't understand for me. Why would?
But you're saying it's a one-to-one ratio, and the board does not grant one-to-one. Because you're taking one off the street, you're privatizing the public way.
They said, "We can park two cars there, but we just, because it's tight. We showed one park, but we could park two cars in there."
Because that would be fine.
What?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bob Demico, BTD, again. I suggest that they go up to the Persons with Disabilities Office and discuss this. They'll give them an application. They can pre, they'll plead their case, and the doctor, all has to sign off on it that she needs this parking space, and they would be glad to approve it.
Counselor, we, I've driven by the property, okay? There's a gate allowing people to park there with no curb cut already. The picture that's online shows that there's a car parked illegally there now.
That's why we'd like to legalize it, make it better.
Yes, but the rules are no parking in that front yard. What we see here is somebody parking there. You then come to us, and you ask us, one-for-one, to take one curb cut off the street so we can park one car in there. It's just not, we're not going to take, we can't take one spot off the street so that you can have a spot in the driveway. It's just not the way it works. We'd like to be helpful, but there's alternatives that you can do.
But you're saying if there was two parking, then it would be okay?
No, it's not.
Yeah, if there was, there would be okay.
It would be a different discussion, on a different matter.
Okay. Okay.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Flavio de Vega, we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
What's the city's position around the one-to-one?
So I understand the objection to one-for-one. Flavio told me that since this would be providing off-street parking for a person who does need a space close to their house, the abutters are generally supportive of it.
But zoning goes to property, don't you think?
Yes, yes. I, I understand that, yes.
There is a lot of support from the neighbors.
I do have a lot of support from them.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jawan Skeens, District Four City Council, Andrea Campbell's office. We would like to go on record of support. We received a letter from the nearby Civic United Neighborhood Association in support of this project.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion denied.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So I would encourage you to try to work with the city together and get a parking spot in front.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, we're going to call for deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30, I'm sorry, 11:30. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
Patrick Mahoney of Adams &amp; Maranti, address at 350 West Broadway, deferring Cummings Highway.
Motion for a deferral.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Call the case, I apologize.
What's the reason for the request?
The, this may have requests from the community, although not related to zoning, for, for an engineering report as it relates to the ledge. We've, we've reduced the unit count based on their feedback, and I believe we're nearing the end of the community process. This did kind of come out of left field, but we are responding quickly to them, and at their request, are requesting a deferral this time.
How much, how much time will you need?
A month.
December twelfth, word, Counselor?
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, we have to vote on it.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to defer.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All opposed. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ninety dash one oh two Tennyant Street in Dorchester.
Calling BOA case 67832290-102-Tennyant Street.
Jeff Drago, Drago and Toscano, an address at fifteen Broad Street. We're seeking another deferral on this particular matter. It's a billboard matter. There's been some changes up at the BPDA that we've been waiting for, and we want to now move forward within a abutter meeting. We would ask, if possible, if there's that December twelfth date for hearing, if that is available, we would love to have that.
First, make a motion for...
I'll make a motion for deferral.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And that December twelfth date is available, Counselor?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
11:30.
Thank you.
Calling last call for last, for deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30. None being heard. We'll get back to the business at hand. Okay. Two eight nine Adam Street, BOA 763747281-289 Adam Street. Change of use and occupancy from twenty-two apartments, four retail spaces to twenty-two apartments, two restaurants, a beauty salon, one after-school learning program, and a retail tenant. Fit out to be performed by others on separate applications. Article sixty-five dash eight, conditional after-school program is a conditional use. Article sixty-five, section eight, use regulation. Nail salon is conditional.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Michael Welsh, representing the applicant. I was with V Tran, who is the owner of the commercial condominium unit that the change of use is being applied for. This is a new construction building that was completed last year, and the, there are four commercial condominiums on the first floor that were approved as retail, as placeholders, until we found out who they would be sold to. This is the last unit being sold, and the, the applicant has reached an agreement with the Kumon after, after-school learning program for a portion of it, and then they would like to retain the other portion of this unit for a beauty salon services. There is actually, for this use, there would be, it's a reduction in the, the parking requirement, so there's no increase in parking from this change of use. There is off-street parking, and the, the after-school program is a paid service where the children would be dropped off for their class, then they'd be picked up, and there's a space inside where they would be, have, be able to communicate, you know, before or after class. There wouldn't be anyone outside, and we think it would be a good use for the neighborhood to increase street traffic, foot traffic, and, and provide services for the community.
Okay, so I, I need a little clarification here. I'm a little confused. There are four commercial condominium units?
Yes.
Okay, and I, and two restaurants have already been approved?
Yes.
And then, then, so this proposal is for the other chip spaces?
Yeah, this one is for, there, there was one larger space. This is the largest of the condominiums, and they weren't able to find a tenant to occupy the entire, entire one, so this is to subdivide that large, that large unit into, so now there's one additional use.
Okay, that's what I'm, yeah, I was adding, I didn't add up the four, I added up the five.
So the one retail use is now being changed to after-school learning and beauty, beauty salon. So it's, there's one...
And does that mean there's still another condominium to be...
No, this is the last one. What's that? Yeah, no, this is the last of the condominiums to be sold, so the last change of use.
Okay, maybe I'm a little thick. I'm, so there's two units left. We're talking about a beauty salon and after-school learning program, so that's just two, right?
It's, it's one condominium that will, that will, that will be subdivided, physically subdivided.
Okay, so what's happening to the fourth?
The, there are, one of them is, has been retained as retail.
Okay, and that doesn't require any variance?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's, by now, yeah. Okay. How many square feet is the, is the total, is the unit?
Three thousand.
Twelve hundred seventy-two, and the after-school will be 2,066.
And how many kids do you anticipate having the after-school program?
So on the objection that we put in place, it's thirty-six capacity, including staffing.
I'm sorry, how many?
Thirty-six capacity.
Thirty-six?
Yes.
Which includes the staff?
Which includes staffing as well.
And what, 2700?
And that's, that's not all at one time.
2,066 square feet.
Or 2,066.
2,066.
That, that, that's not, I don't believe that that's all at one time. There's two, there's two classes, is, 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 one, two days of week. There are classes.
So at any one, at, at, what is the most that will be in that space at any one time?
One time, it's around the ten to fifteen students at the one time, but they are scheduled, so one hour to fifteen students, but next one hour to fifteen students, but we have like around thirty chairs.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Pazani, how are the drawings?
The drawings are adequate. It clearly shows the larger space subdivided into two subspaces.
Okay. And what are the requirements on parking for this?
For educational, the, the, for other educational, it was one space per thousand square feet. For retail, it was two per thousand square feet, so for that portion of the private drops. There are fourteen off-street parking spaces provided for the building right now.
For the whole building?
For the whole building.
And are some of them dedicated to the space?
They're, they're dedicated to the businesses during business hours and to the apartments during off, after, after hours.
Is there anyone here to speak in, in support of the project?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Ellis and Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, on behalf of Qua Fam, we'd like to go on record in support. There is support both from the abutters and the Fields Corner Civic Association. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Council, Frank Baker, we'd like to go on record in strong support.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jawan Skeens, District Four City Council, Andrea Campbell's office. We would like to go on record of support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, OBS Council, Al Michael Flaherty, council to go record support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dave Viterini, on behalf of City Council President Michelle Wu, we'd also like to go on record in support.
And we're here to speak in opposition. How, what age kids are in the after-school program?
Around four years old to the high school age.
Any questions from the board? Have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling BOA 74336613-19 Mill Street. Deck replacement per architectural plans, work being done at seventeen Mill Street. This is an existing two-family dwelling. Article nine, section one, extension of non-conforming use, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
David Madden, seventeen Mill Street. I'm the owner.
Could you describe the project, please? I'm wondering why you need a variance.
Yes, we are removing an existing deck on the side of our house, and the intent is to replace that existing and expand it along our exclusive use space to the rear of the property.
The height of the deck above grade is what?
Two feet.
This one, and why it wasn't just as a bridge?
It was deemed an expansion of a non-conforming use because of the nature of a, we're essentially a multi-family unit.
So this is, this is a, what, three or four times expansion of the existing deck?
Yes.
How are the drawings, Mr. Pazani?
The drawings are very nice. That's what caused the question. I don't know why it's not looked at. It's just landscape. But, anyway, you're here.
Is it, is it covered?
Um, no. There will be a piece in the back that will have a trellis over it, but it's not covered.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is David Carter from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support of this project, held in a butters meeting on-site, in which all of the butters in attendance expressed their full support for the project, and also presented to the Clamp Point Civic Association, who voted to support the project as well. Thank you very much.
Anyone to speak in opposition? Is there a motion, please?
What's your approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, you're outside.
Thank you.
Calling our next case, BOA 75833297R Child Street. Legalize a carriage house as a single-family dwelling. This has been an existing condition for many years. No work to be done. One of two structures on the same lot, number ninety-seven, is a two-family dwelling. Article, the violation that follows, Article nine, section two, non-conforming use. Number ninety-seven, change the size of a lot existing, non-conforming, two-family. Article sixty-nine, section thirty, application dimensional requirement, two or more of the main dwelling, sorry, two or more main dwellings on one lot, ninety-seven and ninety-seven R. Article sixty-nine, section thirty, application dimension required, ninety-seven R conformity with existing building alignment. Article sixty-nine, section nine, dimensional requirement, ninety-seven R excessive FAR. Article sixty-nine, section nine, dimensional regulation, ninety-seven R insufficient lot width. Article sixty-nine, section nine, dimensional regulation, ninety, and number ninety-seven, insufficient open space. Article sixty-nine, section nine, dimensional regulations, number ninety-seven, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Joe Consalvo, Union Construction, six four seven Boylston Street, Boston.
Okay, Mr. Consalvo, can you just quickly tell us what the application is for?
So basically, this is my parents' home. The, they passed away in 2014 and 15, and getting ready to clean up the property, we discovered that the carriage house that's been in the back for, as far as I can remember, back to the eighties, so thirty-five-plus years, was never legalized. So the application is, no work to be done. It's been there since, as far, as long as I can remember.
What, what is it, do you spend?
Uh, single family. It's always been, it's always been in the apartment. Pardon?
The carriage house itself?
Yes, it's always been a, a resident.
Okay, as well as the main house in front, right?
And the main house in front is a two-family. Again, that was never legalized. I did file that, so the two-family in front, the permit's been issued, and this is to clean up the, the third unit.
Okay. How are the drawings, Mr. Pazani?
The drawings are adequate. Have you been paying taxes on how many units?
My sisters take care of that. I can't answer that.
But you're saying there's basically three units there on the lot?
Yes, over, over thirty-five years.
But you don't know what the tax is?
I don't believe I have that. My sister was going to come, but didn't make it.
Okay. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the project? I'm ready to update the project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I want to go on the record in support of this project. Contingent upon it, there's no additional work being done. An abutters meeting was held, and there was no opposition from the community. I'm going to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Walter Appwhite, Counselor Tim McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dave Viterini, on behalf of City Council President Michelle Wu, we'd also like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, OBS Council, Al Michael Flaherty, council to go, like to go record in support.
Is there anyone here in opposition? Any questions from the board? Have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Calling number, calling our next case, BOA 7213916R Alvin's, Alvinson Terrace. So installation of a hundred-foot chicken coop in rear yard of house. Article fifty-five, section eight, use regulation, use, accessory keeping of animals forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Lori Pace, six Alvinson Terrace. Do you make the claim?
Okay, you want to tell us what you're planning?
Uh, should I fill these out, too?
If you can.
Can you book a business?
Yeah. So the plan is to put in a nine-foot by six-foot coop in the backyard. It has an enclosed five-foot by three-foot living space for the chickens. So then the whole extra space would be their run on the front. The property would be in the backyard. We would have three, four chickens. I guess the variance per Article eighty-nine allows up to six, but we'd be keeping them for my, my children are interested in chickens, so more pets and raising them as animals, and the eggs would be a side product.
No roosters.
Yeah. Per Article eighty-nine, there's no roosters are allowed in the city of Boston. The whole, and structure is enclosed in hardware, which... The whole structure is enclosed in hardware, which is fine chicken wire. The coop will be constructed from fiberglass or poly... Like a plastic, so it can be cleaned with Clorox and sanitized. We're only interested in three or four. Article 89 allows up to six, so if it did get passed, but we don't want six. Article 89 is in there.
So basically, guys, this is just your garden variety chicken coop?
Yeah.
Any questions on the board?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
The illustration on the front, is this your yard?
This is actually a picture from the internet. This is the plans I purchased. I have not built it until I get the permit.
So will there be a barrier between you and your neighbors?
The whole yard has a six-foot fence around it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in support of the project?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We did a Butters meeting, everyone was seemed very excited and in support. Jamaica Plain zoning also made an approval, so I would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Is there anyone here in opposition? What's the pledge of the board?
Well, as a 50-year resident of Jamaica Plain, I'd like to make a motion to grant relief.
And I'd like to say...
Right, it's a motion to grant relief. And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Obviously, you are constrained with not particular supply of city.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Okay, this is calling the next case, BOA 742797, 28 Cedarwood Road. The violation... I'm sorry. Extend living space on attic from storage space to living space, adding dormer windows to existing roof on east side, adding skylights at west side roof. Replacing pull-down second-floor ceiling entry to attic with stairs from second to third floor. The violations are Article 55, section nine, floor-to-area ratio. Name and address for the record, please.
James Kennedy, 28 Cedarwood Road. I'm the owner. I have with me the person who did the drawings, Lucian Allaire, and the contractor, Jim Britton.
Okay, would you like to describe the project?
Yes. So we're refinishing the attic. We're doing an internal stairway from the second to third floor, kind of partly knocking out a wall and using closet space to go through that room, so that... We're putting dormer windows to make it a more comfortable space in the attic. Our interest is just in extending living space for guest space, studio space. We have three granddaughters who visit regularly from Michigan, come for a few weeks to summer camp, for example. We'll put their bunk beds up there. And so, and yeah, skylight... So I've... I had a Butters meeting, September 12th, and there was no opposition, and I handed a... I described the people who attended in a sheet given to you. And then got unanimous approval of the Jamaica Hills Association and also the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council's zoning committee. And I've petitioned my neighbors about three times, so they've either expressed support or have been silent.
Okay. Mr. Bazani, how are the drawings?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in support of the project?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I would like to go on record to support. We held in a Butters meeting on-site and all the neighbors were in support, as well as Jamaica Hills and Jamaica Plain Zoning Council. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Shannon Murphy from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this project.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, I'm the City Councilor Michael Flaherty, councilor to go record in support.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve of BPDA design.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.
Calling our next case, BOA 71903479 Linden Street. Change occupancy from a two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling with four off-street parking spaces. Also to construct a new addition in the rear yard. Renovate the existing construction... Existing structure. Article 51, section eight, use regulation, multifamily dwelling forbidden. Article 51, section nine, dimensional regulation, lot area and additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 51, section nine, dimensional regulations, lot width insufficient. Article 51, section nine, dimensional regulation, floor area ratio excessive. Article 51, section nine, dimensional regulations, usable open space insufficient. Article 51, section nine, dimensional regulations, side yard insufficient. Article 51, section 56, off-street parking and loading, off-street parking insufficient. Name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jeff Drego with Drego and Toscano, this is address of 15 Rod Street. Here representing Josh Fetterman from City Realty and Tonya Carrier from Cull Design, the architect. We're here seeking zoning relief at 79 Linden Street in Alston. The proposal is to change the occupancy from an existing two-family dwelling to a two... To a four-family dwelling with four rear off-street parking spaces. As part of that proposal, we're looking to construct a new addition in the rear, complete gut renovation of the building, both interior and exterior, and we'll be adding new spaces in the back, as he has mentioned. This particular area is a zoning sub-district 3F 4,000. Our lot size is one of the larger lots in the area of 5,799 square feet. Even with the addition, we'll still have a setback of over almost 47 feet in the rear. There's a commercial structure in the back of us, there's no residential housing in the rear. But we also provide, which most of the folks like, four off-street parking spaces down a driveway on the left-hand side. Just to give you an idea of the units, unit one would be a duplex unit in the basement and first floor, ceiling height would be seven foot six in the basement, that would be a 1,398 square foot unit. The two-bed, two-bath, unit two, also a two-bed, two-bath, 1,400 square foot unit. And then unit three and four, each unit, 1,581 square foot, three-bed, two-bath, and a 1,379, three-bed, two-bath. We did receive the ACA group's support on this proposal, as well as a very successful Butters meeting. At this time, I can pause and take any questions the board may have.
Are these units... Are the current units rental or for sale?
Currently, they're rental units.
And what do you have to say?
We're proposing condominium units.
Any questions on the board? How are the drawings, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there anyone to speak in favor of the project?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Warren Riley, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in record in support.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Councilor Mark Ciomo, I'd like to also go on record in support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tony Tizadoro, representing the Alston Civic Association, we'd like to go on record in support.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're outside?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
11:30, rediscussions. Do we have any deferrals or withdrawals? I know I called for them already, but I might as well ask again. Okay. Our first case is 6 Long Terrace, BOA 58538... I'm sorry. 585382. So combined parcel ID number 2009196000 with 209... I'm sorry, 20091955000 to erect a single-family home. Framing plans to be submitted upon ZBA approval. Article 56, section eight, residential sub-district dimensional insufficient lot size. Article 56, section eight, residential sub-district dimensional insufficient front yard setback. Article 56, section eight, residential sub-district dimensional excessive FAR. Name and address for the record, please.
Fiona Duncan, 5 Shaw Lane, Dedham.
Okay. Remind us why you're back here for rediscussions?
We have done some adjustments to the plan and we have a .39 FAR now, which is one of the issues.
Do we have copies of the revised plans?
So the last... You modified the plans when you were defending earlier?
Yes.
Okay. In response to community concerns?
Yes. Well, we had some Butters meetings and they were concerned about the size of the house, so we reduced the height. And they were also... The length of the house was a bit large, so we reduced that by some feet. And we offered to change the design of the home, but they said that that wasn't an issue. They...
Okay, can you just list either one of the changes that it made?
Okay, so we reduced the height of the house from 27.5, it's now 25.8. And we reduced the length of the house of the right-side fence. It was almost 13 foot. Sorry. It was originally just 10 feet 3 inches off the fence and now it's almost 13 feet. We offered to take away the two-car garage to reduce the size, but they really wanted the two-car garage to allow parking in the garage, and then we also would have parking outside the garage for guests, so there wouldn't be an issue with on-street parking at all. You know, we've looked at all the houses in the neighborhood and most single...
Excuse me, do you still have a garage for two parking spaces?
Yes.
And now parking outside of the garage, is that correct?
There is space to park if we have guests, but we're not blocking the driveway, the long terrace, which is a dead-end lane. Just, we looked around the neighborhood and a lot of the houses, single families, similar to what we planned to build, are on small lots, a lot smaller than ours, actually.
What is the size of the lot?
5,522 square feet.
How are the drawings, Mr. Bazani?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the project?
We have a letter from one of our neighbors.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Neighborhood Services, just like to go on record in support. This project's come up to the neighborhood a few times, most recently in September, in front of the Neighborhood Council, and they voted also in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Michael Brady, 6 Long Terrace. I believe this project has come up in the past in front of the West Roxbury zoning board and has been declined due to the insufficient square footage, and that hasn't changed, so my opinion lays with that. I also think the last time it came in front of the Neighborhood Board, it was voted on by five members, and due to the primary elections, it was not voted on by the full board. So it's, you know, I'd just like to go on record with that being stated that it has not sat in front of the full board. Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve of BPDA design.
Second. Calling our next case, BOA 596654, 236 Huntington Ave. Extend existing garage by 10 feet for new registry of motor vehicle inspection bay. Article nine, section one, extension is a non-conforming use. Is anybody here from 236 Huntington Ave?
Thank you, Chris, 875 Hyde Park Ave.
So good. 875, ask 877 Hyde Park Ave. I apologize. Existing... Extend existing garage by 10 feet for new registry of motor vehicles inspection bay. Article nine, section one, extension is non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Bob Nealan, I manage the property. The applicant Salvador Carey, he operates the business there. He's at 875 Hyde Park Avenue. I'm at 68 Watertown Street, Watertown, Mass.
Could you present the proposal?
The... This is a project that got started without a building permit. Salvador and his contractor, they extended the building by six feet without having the proper permits in hand. We are here to... Well, Michael Ne, it turned out that the permit process was missing a step. He had to come to the ZBA to get relief for extending the non-conforming use. So...
Has the work been done?
Yes, it has been. But not to the satisfaction of Michael Ne, Inspectoral Services. He's put a stop work order on the project until we get this relief. As soon as we get this... If we get this relief, he'll issue the permit and the correction... The corrective steps with the foundation can be done.
So it's partially done?
It's partially done, correct. But visually, it's built and... Would you like to see a photograph?
Mr. Bazani, how are the drawings?
Partially done.
So what are we looking at here? In the photographs?
The portion of the building with under inspection, that is the bump out... That's the bump out six feet.
Okay. So prior to that, it's just been one continuous wall?
Correct. That was actually a garage bay. Salvador Carey, his mast stage inspection included a... What was it, a commercial?
Commercial inspection.
Commercial inspection. You needed a certain length of bay, 35 feet or so to...
Yeah, it was supposed to... Hi, my name is Salvador Carey for the board. The operators all carry out of service. That door that we actually built was six feet longer than what we're supposed to do. When actually we're building, I... It's my first time doing something like that. You know, I just contract somebody and I find out that we need a permit. So we do all the paperwork, I pay for the drawing, we talk to the architect, to the engineer, to all this stuff, and we have all the permit ready. I mean, all the paperwork ready to start doing it the right way it's supposed to be done, but we first was... Had to be approved by you guys in order for us to continue doing that. Right there is the drawing of the door and the extension also. We also have... I'm sorry to interrupt you. We also have a letter of support from the neighborhood, from all my neighbors around, so they actually agree with us with the business that we're performing, even the door. And we've been also to the Neighborhood Association, they was okay with us, they approve us in this construction.
We'll get all that. Okay. Thank you. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of the project?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Brian Flynn, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Want to go on the record in support of this project. I was originally initiated before my tenure with ONS. However, the community process was completed, and as the gentleman has mentioned, there was overwhelming support by the community as well for it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Walter Appwhite, Councilor McCarthy's office. We'd also like to go on record in support.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, I'm the City Councilor Michael Flaherty, councilor to go record in support.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Have a motion, please.
Motion to approve with continued... We probably don't need design review here, Jeff?
No.
Okay. So motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Calling case number BOA 739020, 8 Chestnut Street, Childstown, Mass. 600 square feet, third-floor addition on existing two-story, single-family residence. 600 square feet, third-floor addition on existing two-story, single-family residence. There will be a new stair as well as a master bedroom, master bath, and office, walk-in closet per plan. Article 58, Section 8, dimensional regulation, floor area ratio excessive. Article 58, Section 8, dimensional regulation, side yard insufficient. Article 58, Section 8, dimensional regulation, rear yard insufficient. Could I have your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Melissa Brennan, 8 Chestnut Street, I'm the owner of the house.
Tim Sheehan, at 9 Wall Street, I'm a building designer.
Okay, you want to tell us what you're proposing?
Sure. Melissa lives in an existing 1,230 square foot, single-family. It was part of a six-unit development that they did in the mid-2000s, moved in in 2006. And, well, when Melissa did the project, she basically spearheaded the thing, the project with Jack French, and he was single. And 12 years, 12 years later, she has three kids and a husband, so she wants to make it 490 square foot bigger. We've had two neighborhood meetings, I gave Mr. Pizani the first set of drawings, we were asking for 600 square feet, mansard roof, kind of like what's there. People didn't like the third floor, didn't want to lose their views, so the best we could do was steepen the angle of the mansard to break the mass of the building down a bit. And because of that, it's a bit smaller, it's like 490 square feet as opposed to 600. And essentially, what we're asking for was a master bedroom for them, a master bath, a walk-in closet and a small office, in 400, you know, almost 500 square feet.
How are the drawings?
Can I just make a comment about the FAR? I spoke to Mr. Santana, the plant's examiner, and he said that upon further review, we actually didn't need that variance because the lot is 11,000 square feet and the six houses only amount to about 8,500. Even with my addition, we're well below 22,000 square feet and he did agree with me, but he said that because I had already appealed, he couldn't kind of fix that and that it should be noted here at the board that we actually did not need that variance, so I don't know if you agree, Mr. Pizani?
Well, I would say that I would leave it as a FAR violation, that way you get a gift.
Okay.
So, just so I can visualize, this is six, single-family residences on altogether?
It's actually three buildings, so one building is number 12 and 10 Chestnut Street. I'm a single building, I'm number 8 Chestnut Street, and then next to me is one building that contains 2, 4 and 6 Chestnut Street.
Do they all look pretty similar?
My house is the only two, two-floor, and it's a carriage house.
What I'm asking is in terms of context, is doing an addition on one of them, is that sort of?
They're all three-floor houses except mine.
Yeah.
And it was parcel R17C, I believe, so it, you know, it was a little bit of an odd shape, so.
Can we ask for a speaker in favor? Getting late today, yes?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Christopher Breen from the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Service, who would like to go on record in support. As stated, we hosted two community meetings and received a number of letters indicating support for the variances to allow the applicant's family to continue to grow in the neighborhood. The applicant also had a second meeting to show shadow and view studies. Thank you very much.
Is anyone here to speak in opposition? Have a motion?
Motion.
Approval BPDA design review.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, now, everybody prepared to keep going? Want to take a break? Okay, let's follow through, move to interpretation.
Okay, so, we're going to call 12 o'clock interpretations, case BOA 74004255, Hull Street. The petitioner seeks a determination that the Inspection Services Department erred in issuing a permit, ALT 712386. The permit was issued as an allowed use. Name and address, sir, sorry.
Matthew Dunn, I'm an attorney, my office is at One International Place. I represent EMI LLC, they're, they own the property located at 59 Hull Street in the North End Neighborhood District. It's also situated in the Freedom Trail Neighborhood Design Overlay District. This is their appeal of a building permit that was issued to do work at 55 Hull Street, which is an abutting parcel. The permit was issued to do certain work in the, in the neighborhood, in the Freedom Trail Neighborhood Design District. It is being used for a different purpose, it's being used to dig out a dirt-floor basement of an existing structure to put in a basement dwelling unit in that location which is prohibited under existing zoning. The, under Section 7 of the Enabling Act, states that the building permit for such a purpose, they need to get the zoning relief in order to, first, to have a basement unit before they can start the work to build the basement unit. So, there's a bit of a, putting a cart before the horse here. That's important because during that permitting process, some information would get flushed out, particularly with regards to what would the impact of the building that basement unit have on a butters such as my client. That information was not provided to the building, to the ISD. As a result, my client has began experiencing where he's never experienced before, water infiltration at 59 Hull Street, which is a property that he did a full gut rehab back in 2007. So, there was no water before, there is this, these construction activities that are happening to build out and dig out a dirt floor at 55 Hull Street, and now there is water. My client has engaged a geo, geotechnical engineer to assess the flow of water. He's indicated that that information would be provided in a plan from the Boston Sewer Department which was, was never provided to ISD. So, with respect to that, and there's going to be some other butters that are going to speak about the harms that are flowing from the, from the dig-out of this basement space with regards to not understanding, there's not a clear understanding as to what the impact of the, the water flow in that area or what the construction activities would have on the flow of water to a butter, so that's creating problems not just for my client but for others in the area. So, for that purpose, would ask that the, the owner and the applicant who holds the permit be precluded from utilizing it any further until, or the cease and desist issue with regards to her ability to use that until a thorough understanding is provided to ISD and the appropriate permits are sought and obtained to do that basement work. There's also?
Is the owner applicant here?
Yes, he is.
Okay.
Oh, no, I don't know if the owner applicant is here, my client is here.
No, I'm talking about the owner applicant. Okay, I just wanted to see, no, no, I just wanted to see if you were here. Why, you know, this is, why you both sit at the table here? And, we can have, we can sort of try and see if we can, okay, so?
Excuse me, are we treating, we normally don't treat this as a public here. Well, we get information from the parents and personally brought the case forward, but I'm just questioning whether or not we open it up to?
Well, yeah, here's what I would like to do, we would like to hear from, hear from you. And the issue is strictly whether I's the erred in issuing the permit, that's our?
There's, well, if I could just add, there's two points. One is with regards, I guess, the grounds are, it should not have issued because there isn't the zoning relief that is needed with regards to a variance for a basement unit in the, in the particular zoning district where this is located. There's also changes to the, to the massing of the building, there wasn't any small project review by the BRA that's required under Section 54171C for doing that type of stuff. So, there are, those are really the grounds, there's also an issue of whether they are utilizing the permit that did issue in conformity with the terms and conditions of the permit itself. And I think that that was, that was brought up.
The work is done, correct?
The work is semi-done.
Semi-done, there's not been stopped?
No, it has not been stopped, that's what we hear.
Okay, okay. Let's, can we hear, are you representing the owner applicant?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, Daniel Toscano, Dr. Toscano, attorneys-at-law to my meeting, right is Peter Vanco, I represent Urban Court Development in this matter. I did plan on speaking today because I know there's a representative from ISD here where they issued the permit. This is an existing two-family home that's been boarded up for at least 25 years, boarded up, so just sought a permit to renovate the existing premises, just to correct the argument of my brother, it's not a basement unit, Unit 1 is, the architect in test, Unit 1 is the first floor and basement unit. There's an interior stairwell that's been, an existing interior stairwell based on the scan he's done when purchased the property, or my client purchased the property. So, Unit 1 is first floor and basement unit, which actually I think is more of a, it's maybe feet above the ground because it's, the whole street is really on a down slope. And then Unit 2 is the existing remainder, second floor. So, it's not a basement apart that was seeking relief, if it was, I certainly would agree with counsel that if it was a basement unit, it would have been a forbidden use, we probably would have been here seeking variance, but it's not a basement unit. Unit 1 is first floor and?
Okay.
Was this ever before us? Was this, this is in Cleveland place?
This is not Cleveland place, this is Hull Street, this is 55 Hull Street, which is closest towards the Storini skating rink going down here. It has been boarded up for 25 at least years, every minute, so.
Okay, so what I'd like to do, we have a representative from ISD here, right? Could you come to the podium and explain ISD's role on this?
Yes, good morning, my name is Mark Joseph, plant examiner, City of Boston, ISD. I am not the plants examiner for this project, the plant examiner is not here today, so I was asked to come here, did some research on this and come to give some clarity on this. And what I was able to see that this is an existing two-family, that there is no dwelling unit per se, it's just an extension of the first floor to the basement, which is the unit, there is no dwelling unit in there. The permit, ALT 712385, was only to do some alterations to do what's there, but not to add any more zoning, no floor yard ratio, no more floor, no anything else, just to do, do some repairs there.
Mr. Joseph, what in the original that's been banned, did in fact the first-floor unit extend into the basement as part of that first-floor unit?
To my understanding, Tom White was the plant examiner, that's my understanding. So, even though he was not, but floor yard ratio was fine.
Right, and to the architect, when you did your measurements of the existing conditions, did in fact the first-floor unit extend into the basement?
Yes, it did, and further, it was a semi-decorative stair. The stairs that, we got the building in a gutted format, but the stairs existed and the railings did as well, those have been left through previous demo exercises. The stairs were of the same quality and type throughout the building of all levels inclusive to the basement. Basement, which we called a garden level because Hull Street does, is steep, windows, there's plenty, plenty of code-required light and vent that could be provided to that area. By all appearances, it was a living area.
Okay, so as part of your drawings, did you introduce new windows, new exterior?
We did not, everything was in existing, in existing condition, we were able to work with existing masonry openings on the front of Hull Street, as well in the rear, there was plenty of rear area for windows, so we were able to have code-required bedrooms, windows providing light and vent to those bedrooms. It was all, it was all by right. And additionally, the ceiling height that we discovered was around 7'6" when we got the property, so.
And also, this building is going to be sprinkled according to the record I see. There is a 18D system, for sprinkler system, according to the record here, so I see.
So, Mr. Joseph, ISD was satisfied that this was a two-family?
That's my understanding, but Tom White's not here, that's my understanding, the permit was issued and according to what was submitted.
The work that is being done is simply that of?
Interior alterations.
Yes.
Would like to make more?
Can I add something to that?
No, this is not actually public hearing, we're just trying to get some information.
Yeah, no, I mean, based on the comments of ISD and quite frankly, knowing their level of diligence, I'm prepared to say that ISD did not hear.
Okay, so is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
Is there a second?
You're not willing to listen to, you're willing to listen to? But you're here, you're willing to listen to information that he's providing?
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, there's a motion on the floor. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
All aye close? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Calling case BOA 741, I'm sorry, 747215117 Bolton Street. The petitioner seeks a determination that a special services erred in issuing the permit, ERT 689458. Name and address for the record, please.
Terrence Lee, 119 Bolton Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Okay. Raymond Hughes, 28 Houghton Street, Dorchester, Mass, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, and your, and it's your position that the ISD erred in issuing the permit?
I am seeking interpretation of the process, there was no, I looked at the materials that were submitted to Inspection Services and there was actually no survey which would indicate the footprint of the building, so, and then at the time, I had some concerns representing both myself and my neighbors. Three months have passed since I submitted for this appeal, so a lot has happened between now and then.
So, does that change your view?
Well, I'm just still seeking the interpretation on what was submitted, there was no survey, for all I know, the building could have been put down anywhere, there were drafted drawings provided, so that's, to my point, that's still my original question.
Mr. Joseph, are you speaking for ISD on this?
Good morning again, good morning, sir. I was doing viewer for this project. There was a survey, from a land surveyor for this, the land size, the width of it is 27 feet. And the building, the footprint of the building on that lot is 21 feet. The code requires three-foot yard setbacks, which left us six feet, three on each side. And then, the lot also is a shallow lot, which is 40 feet. Based on Article 68, if your lot, the length of the lot is not 100 feet, you have some exemption. The required rear yard setback is 20 feet, but due to the size of this lot, which is a shallow lot, it was able to get 15 feet to get that exemption. That's probably what, I don't know if you were able to see that?
So, just, what I was really looking for at that time was just like the engineer's surveyor that the developer had done, just, you know, 27-foot lot where that starts and ends, just confirmation. I'm looking at the building now and it looks pretty close to where it should be, but at the time of submission, that was just lacking, so that's?
I understand.
You know, that's?
Okay, have you, have you been given a survey of the block?
I have not.
Is that something that could be done?
Absolutely, just so you guys know, I've been dealing with this neighbor and the neighbors for about six or seven years in this project. I've given them every opportunity to review everything.
Do me a favor, please provide them with a copy of the block plan. Okay, so, do we have a motion on the question of interpretation whether I's the erred?
Again, I'll make a motion that, excuse me, ISD did not air.
Second.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
Have a great day.
Next case, BOA 751038461, Massachusetts Avenue. The petitioner seeks determination that inspectional service department aired in issuing permit, ALT 676342. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Gail Feneff, owner and a butter, so 459 Mass Ave.
And Bob Barney, owner and a butter at 463 Mass Ave.
Okay, so who, who is brought to the plate? You?
Both of us. We're on either side of this property. So what I have done is, since you apparently only had a handwritten copy, I've actually typed up that, is it illegible for anyone?
What is it?
The, our appeal.
Oh.
So, and I've broken it down into sections and I have pictures, so for each of these sections, I will give you a rundown on that. Thank you for speaking with us. We are not attorneys, we are citizens, we are butters, so.
Like all the public hearing.
That's right. Well, we appreciate being heard. We have tried in the past to come here. And one of our first issues that we had was when this, this case came to the G-Cod and got G-Cod approval. And if you look at the Board of Appeal terms, it says excavate rear patio, install new drainage, retaining walls, paving, exterior egress stairs, exterior HVAC units. That is the first mention of exterior HVAC units anywhere in any of the plans that you have. So we are definitely refuting those. And so basically, under that G-Cod application, and I did ask the clerk at the time, since we were told we couldn't speak, I said, well, they've never ever specked out those, they're giant HVAC units. So we have a problem with that and we have a problem with the new design that they are proposing in order to try to prevent too much noise in the back with these giant compressors out there for heating and cooling. So basically, if we go through each of our appeal lines, and I will give you the pictures, we have responded, and the responses are in red, and I've given one copy to Craig Gowden, but if anyone else would like a copy, this is our response to the attorney's, what he wrote last night, that we got at 6:00 o'clock last night. Thank you. So our first, our first problem is that the sewerage line was cut and when they excavated without a permit, when they first started this project at 461, they excavated with no permit. And the permit was just to, you know, take out some dirt, but when they hit the sewage line, they said, uh-oh, because it was crossing right across the, and you can, this is pictures, crossing right across where they wanted to put a patio. So instead of calling Boston Water and Sewer at that point, they cut that line. They put bends in it and they ran it out, so they cut it at the sewer. Now, they never inspected the sewer line all the way to the actual large sewer line in our alley. So we have had several people in our alley have had to redo their sewer lines. This one was literally cut, bent, and it's, we don't believe that it was installed properly. It was never inspected by Boston Water and Sewer. So we first think, if you have a 17-unit brownstone with 17 bathrooms and showers and that's going to go through that sewer line, A, that sewer line was rerouted closer to my property at 459 Mass Ave, and B, we are very worried that the way that they did that is illegal and is not going to stand up. So we certainly don't want problems. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, the, they, since they had done this work without ever surveying, they built over that sewer line what I'm calling a brick shelf. And in order, it hides the sewer line, but it also is over my property line. So they have actually built a structure that is over my property line. When they did do the surveying, when they did do the surveying, they, you can see that they've built over my property line. We wanted that removed. They claimed that our, in the letter from Attorney Soros, he claimed that our existing retaining wall was problematic. It is not. I've also included pictures of our retaining wall, which is in perfect shape. So they did this to hide the sewer line and they're refuting that. Point number three, improper rainwater and downspout. They never actually did a downspouting for the rainwater. The rainwater runoff used to go underneath the dirt, so they cut that pipe and they just left an empty rainwater pipe just to splash the water down onto this new shelf. The water has damaged all of our pointing and it has caused great crevices in the brick. This has never been repaired. We did have a letter from Sean Lyden to make Achilles go and fix that downspout so that the water would not ruin the pointing, but the damage has been done and not repaired. Section four, no repair for G-Cod has been done yet, and again, we're getting into rainy season and winter. Last year, there was about four to five inches of standing water in the backyard, which did leak into 463, the butter's property. And that was because that they have never, because they dug down four feet, they never took into consideration all of the water that was going to build up there. We did have an unusually high rain level for the spring, so, and it has gone down in the summer, but we anticipate that that's going to come back up and start to damage further our foundations. Here's another photo. And lastly, section five, the oversized HVAC units were never included on any plans. They have never been approved by the Department of Environmental Protection. Their specifications for noise are out of spec for the South End neighborhood. They are 63, 62 to 63 dB, and they're claiming wrongly so that they can flip a magic switch and make it quieter to 58 dB. That might be, they might be able to do some mitigation, but they will not give us any guarantee that if they are out of spec and the noise level is too high, that they will remove them. And we have asked repeatedly to get that guarantee, and that has not happened.
Where are we in the construction process?
So they basically dug it out. They haven't fixed the pumping, they haven't done the G-Cod. They have that illegal shelf built over the sewage line right now, which I'm asking to be removed. And then-
Retaining walls.
And they've put up retaining walls, but I don't know if the retaining walls are to spec. They certainly look different from the plans.
But that's it? That's all?
Well, the HVAC units are there on the shelf-
Yes.
And they've never been installed, so they've been there approximately-
The HVAC units have been sitting out there for a year and the elements not turned on because we have, we immediately said, these are, there's no, these are so out of spec and out of whack. You can see the incredible size of them in those photos. Also, we have the plans here that we got from ISD, and this signature here says that Department of Environmental Protection approval is required for this. And I don't believe that's been done.
Okay, so let's, can we have some-
And then, one more thing, just one more. So in the approved plans that ISD gave, okay, you'll notice that the past plans do not include kitchens and cooktops. The approved new plan does. Now, if this in fact is a lodging house, 17-unit lodging house, they are not supposed to be installing kitchens and cooktops. Sean Lyden actually told us that in emails, that the cooktops and kitchens have been removed due to the fact that they want to keep this as a lodging house only.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have representatives from a couple of the agencies that you refer to. Christian, you want to talk about what's happening with Boston Water and Sewer?
Sure. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. So this case was before the board on April 11th, and at that time, the only article of violation was Article 32. We did have the approval letter from Boston Water and Sewer stating that the applicant did meet the requirement for the installation of a recharge system. And according to the plans that were submitted with that letter, it appears that the downspout at the rear of the building is supposed to be connected to that recharge system. So ultimately, upon inspection, Water and Sewer, you know, will certify that once they sign off on the system, once the system's installed, but unless I'm mistaken, I believe the testimony we just given that the system hasn't been installed yet?
No, it hasn't, and the damage hasn't been repaired.
Okay. So then ultimately, once that system is installed, Water and Sewer will come out and, you know, basically sign off on the installation. I guess the only other question I would have is the sewer in the alley, ultimately, who owns that? Is that your sewer or Water and Sewer's sewer?
It's a private alley. Boston Water and Sewer is in charge of the main sewer line. We are individually, our buildings are all responsible for that sewer line that goes from the building out to that line.
Yeah.
And as we've said, these are very old lines and many of them have had to been replaced recently. This one was cut and wasn't looked at all the way.
Let's just try to keep the answer strictly to the question. The question was, what's-
We are responsible.
Well, the question is, who owns the sewer?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The owners.
Okay, that's the answer.
Okay.
All right. So it sounds like there's still some open-ended issues there, Christian.
Yes, yeah, I mean, the system is, she's basically describing a hole in the ground is what it is now with no recharge system. I also had correspondence with the engineer for this project prior to the hearing, just to confirm that any occupiable space wasn't extending below elevation seven Boston City Base, which would have kicked in the no harm component of this. He stated to me that they were going to install previous pavers and that the work was going to be, the work was going to be all above elevation seven Boston City Base.
Okay, and what about from ISD's perspective? Mr. Joseph, can you speak to this?
I was not aware of this project. I don't think I'd be able to speak on this intelligently, the way I should. But most of what I've heard here, there is no zoning violations there. It's mostly things that have to be mitigated, mitigated to probably MOU with the neighborhood and with the developer. That's, I mean, mitigation plans, that's something that we see all the time. And the only violation that was cited by Lisa, based on what I just saw, was a G-Cod, Article 32. That's all the zoning violation that was there.
Right.
And in addition, this, well, the zoning-
I know, I know, I think about that. I mean, let's just be clear, our responsibility, what you brought to us is interpretation of whether ISD aired in issuing a permit.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's limited to that. We don't have authority around Boston Water and Sewer. That's going to have to deal with issues. As Mr. Joseph said about MOUs, there's also Department of Environmental Protection issues.
Yeah.
All we can do is deal with ZDA issues and with the zoning variances and from what Mr. Joseph is saying, that's-
But the Z-
Hang on, hang on, I'm asking him.
Yes, sir. I, based on our knowledge, there is no zoning violation other than 32, the G-Cod-
Right.
-due to the extension of work there. So substantial renovations triggers that, and that's all Lisa Hung was the plan examiner was able to cite, but there was no other zoning violations with respect to this project.
Okay, so it's a board for you to understand, if we, if that's where we are heading, that doesn't mean there are-
That's not, no, that's not the only one. This, this is a zoning violation. If this is a lodging house, if it's a lodging house, you cannot have kitchens and cooktops. That is true.
I think, I think what we're trying to say to you, just so that we're all on the same page, is that we're not arguing that these things are violations-
Yeah.
-that they're not following code.
Okay.
But what we're arguing, our side of this is that we gave relief, okay, on this project at some point, correct?
No, no, you never, they never asked for any-
G-Cod, we gave G-Cod relief.
Only G-Cod.
But that's all we can discuss.
That's all?
That's all, that's up for table for us. We have no, we have no enforcement instrument. We don't have any of those violations. If they don't build the-
No, I understand.
Excuse me, ma'am. If they don't build the deck right, if they do have a problem with the sewer, that is on, that is on inspectional services. They did an error in the G-Cod side of this. I'm going to make a motion that we, that I, that I don't think ISD made an error in this, in issuing this permit.
Well, can I?
There's a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, okay.
What?
The only issue before us is that G-Cod, and so all these other things that you talked about is not before us.
But that's, that's not, no, 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 that's not the plan. The G-Cod thing was already approved. We weren't refuting that.
Hang on, hang on. There's a motion that was made and was passed, so it's over. What I'm, what we're suggesting is you have lots of issues here. You have lots of legitimate issues.
Yeah.
But this particular forum is not the place for it.
Oh, G-Cods, we were fine with that, except the fact that the inspection of the sewage is a problem.
But hang on, hang on, but that's all that we are empowered to deal with. So there are other avenues for you to pursue, and I strongly urge you to do them.
Well, how do we pursue the need for the environmental agency to approve this?
Not quite.
So when this says on the plans, that it is required, how do we do that?
Deal with Sean Lyden. Sean Lyden is the, there's an aspect that there, so you can deal with him.
We are agreeing with you that there are plenty of issues there that need to be addressed because this is not the forum. That's all. So we wish you good luck and Godspeed, and the meeting is over.
Thank you.
It's not lost.